Yeah. One meeting is what, or seven eleven eight? Right, this meeting is being broadcast on local cable TV. Record for rebroadcast on the local cable channels and on the internet. Meeting is also accessible by remote participation. Instructions on the bottom of the agenda. West Newbury Historical Commission has another Tales of Our Town on the website in this packet on the West Newbury Cadet Band. Twenty twenty-three Summer Bandstand Concept Series Thursdays at six thirty PM. And who's the next one? Remember, Jim? Professor Louis in the Comics. All right. Call for volunteers, FY twenty-four physicians on boards, commissions and committees. See the website backslash volunteer. Do know we have an opening on the Conservation Commission that we're need to fill as soon as possible. And a reminder to subscribe for email town agendas, news and announcements at www.wnuberry.org subscribe. And on a staff note, I just wanted to say we're starting the new fiscal year, but our finance department is in throes of closing out last fiscal year. So kudos to Jenny and Kim and Caitlin and Angus for working through this. You know, it's not easy. All right, first item in the regular business request for appointment of Julian Rosio. For the Council of Aging. The members of the application. Cleveland on daily drive, how long have you lived here? Four years, four, that's great. And is this a full-time, a regular position, Jim, or is it associate?
So it's a full-time position. It would be just for this fiscal year.
Okay.
There actually be, there was two terms, one of the big dots.
Oh, okay.
So it'd be finishing up that term and then to be on the report for three year after that.
Okay, okay. Anything you want to say about your application?
Christine Marshall talked to me about that.
Yeah.
And she said that it's, they meet once a month. And it's eleven people on the board. And it has to do with like activities and things to do with the Council on Aging Center. And all of that, right? That's what I'm assuming, she kind of explained to me.
Yeah.
And I work at the food pantry. Come to volunteering.
Oh, good.
So that's why she told me about that.
Okay.
She said, I think you might like it.
Okay, great. Do you know anybody else that's on the council?
No. No, but I live right there.
Yep.
And I feel like I want to meet people and do things, so.
Any questions first?
I don't really administrative.
I can see that, yeah.
You know, bookkeeping.
People person?
Yeah, I do a lot of, I worked at the dressing for a long time.
Yeah.
So. I feel like I'm good shopping.
And understanding other people's issues, I guess, open the.
Yeah.
So, great.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Well, yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Julian Rosio to the balance of a three-year term for the Council on Aging group. It'll run through June thirty, twenty twenty.
So it'll be a one-year term that has.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
So in its way, it's a balance of a three-year term.
Okay. So I will be working with the other people, obviously, on that group.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And when Jim said it was full-time, he was going to get it. It's a full possession of. We'll see tomorrow.
All right, I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
I know you guys don't know me, but. Yeah.
We're the judges on our.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Bye.
All right, thank you. You're appointed.
Thank you.
So she needs to.
Yeah, so I want an email. Something to need to do is about ethics.
Athletes?
Ethics.
Oh, I think it's an athlete somewhere.
Different. Right, I'll send you all that information. Most of it's online, a couple of things you have to sign, I'll send back to you.
Okay.
Otherwise, after that, so then come in, get sworn in.
Okay, sounds good. You guys can call me Julie.
Julie.
That's like my formal name, but nobody calls me that, so.
Very good.
I just call me Julie. So is that all I have to do?
Yeah.
Like, you know, if it starts in September?
It starts in the next meeting that proceeds.
Okay.
So I'll hold the computer and just open it all up when that makes meetings.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Should I go?
You can stay, but you're free to go. All right, the next item, request for reappointment of Walter Bermeister to the Finance Committee. So, I'm your first term, though.
So far, so good.
Yeah.
You have any questions or issues or anything you want to talk about?
Um, I, I, I do, Walt, and I appreciate the time you put in, you know, the effort you put in. But there was, I guess I'll say there was more than one time where there was sort of a unilateral action that was not in concert with, you know, with working as, as part of the Finance Committee. You know, I know at one point you reached out to members in other towns committees without, you know, without consultation with, with the committee that you sat on. And, you know, sort of proposing ideas and to me that's problematic.
Well, let me, let me address that because I think there's a misconception here. The committee did appoint me to deal with the other two Finance Committees and the other two towns in Pennsuckett. And every time I did, I copied the chairman of the Finance Committee. He never objected, he never raised any objection to anything I was doing. If, if he felt like there's anything we needed to discuss with the committee, I'm sure he would have brought it up. So I don't understand, you know, why that seems to be an issue. And I, I can give you copies of the correspondence if you want. He was copying all of the correspondence.
So I, I think maybe, you know, a better approach would be to check in with the committee before reaching out. And then you're not just copying somebody, you're actually making sure that you're representing the committee.
We could do that, but we had, we had discussed in principle when they, when they asked, when they appointed me to do this, we had discussed the types of things we wanted to cooperate on. So I don't think there were any surprises. I'm, I'm really surprised somebody brought up an issue.
Well, I should wait because I was the chair's referencing. And I'm not sure everyone was I in the loop or not, but there was a couple that, when I got the first one, I called you up and I said, it's got to get done through the committee. I said, it can't go that way. So I didn't, I think which issue was on, there was two, I recall. One was on, you had copied Roland, maybe Merrimack too, looking at regionalization issues. And then there was another one on.
On the meeting?
I think it could have been the school.
Most of the correspondence were really.
These are what happened twice when I was there. And I called up and said, you can't go representing yourself as the committee to these other towns. And I think you've eventually understood that, but my perspective is, Walt, that comes out more from a business perspective where you can pick up the phone and call somebody to do it. I, you've got to understand that when you're on these committees, you're representing the town. And the work you do has to go into the committee and then back out via the committee. It can't be just you sending an email to all these people. And I know they sit there and say, I know one of the regionalization, you had a meeting with them and they said, hey, connect back with us and let us know. You did that on your own without going through the FinCon.
I never had a meeting with anybody, no.
There was one meeting with regionalization. A group got together.
There was a meeting that Angus and I attended in August.
Yeah. And then you mentioned some of the people, they had said, we'd like to talk more about regionalization. And then you started corresponding with them. And I think it could get misrepresented that that's speaking for the whole town. That's my only thing is if you're going to do it, it should go to the FinCon. And, and the FinCon should say, okay, put it, let it together, we'll prove it and then send it out. That's what I'm saying. There's just a path that has to get followed.
Okay, I, that's, I'm kind of Tim founded because I haven't really met with them to talk about regionalization. I don't want.
But, yeah, I, I didn't know about a meeting, what I saw was emails that, that, you know, to me, you know, they, they seem, and boy, I don't have the detail in front of me now, but it implied the way I, they appeared to read to me was they implied some ability, not necessarily to make commitments, but you know, a higher level of responsibility and a higher level of decision-making than I think the Finance Committee, particularly an individual member had.
So, so this is looking backward, it seemed like there's some different views of what happened, but going forward, do you understand?
Yeah, I understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, so just rather than sending an email on your, I mean, are you comfortable reappointing? Something that's clear or?
I am, and I just, I just want to let Walt know. I, I get as frustrated by the slowness and the inefficiencies of being on these boards and committees because you're handicapped. There's a lot of times, like, where I meet, I can't call her, I can't call him. It's got to be done in a meeting, it drives me nuts.
Right.
But this is the nature of these meetings. If you're on these committees, we are handicapped by the respect for the committee or the board we're on.
Well, like you say, after a long business career, I'm used to getting things done. And it's kind of frustrating not to get.
You gotta slow it down a little, yes.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, that's sort of the, seems to be sort of the nature of the beast, which is government, I think municipal government is that nothing happens as fast as you would like.
Yeah.
And that's just the nature of the process, yeah.
And not as the individual likes, it's got to be the committee or the board.
Right, right.
That's.
Okay, well, I think we're in shape.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Walt to the FinCon, get a three-year term.
It's three-year, Jim?
Yes.
Good, second. Any further discussion? Upstairs, upstairs.
Okay. If you take the other side.
Uh, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right. You have some work to do on Wednesday.
Thursday, Thursday.
They're so sorry. Uh, I didn't see, request for special event permits. The first is the Apple Harvest Road Race, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And then, let's see, do we have something? There's Jamie, right? Jamie, can you hear us?
Yep, hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, I like your icon there.
Thank you.
All right, so it looks like it has the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief weighed in on this? That wasn't the other than the application?
Mike said he was going to get back to me, but.
Okay, all right, so do you need to wait for that?
You can approve pending disapproval.
Did you have any questions? All right.
I think not everything else, pretty much.
Again, this process is new to me, so the question is, I just, my first question, was any police detail required? Because when you look at the, you know, it talks about indoor and outdoor people and the number. And so there's got to be some police presence, but it doesn't indicate in here what that's going to be and.
Usually when they reach out to the Chief of Police, people say what the required is.
And I know this road race has been done for many years, and I'm not trying to, I just want to understand it, so.
Yeah.
There was somewhere, I mean, there was the, somewhere here referenced, I thought, too. Is that what was done in the past or, or, so I read through this whole package.
I got very little on this one.
I thought there were two officers.
So is it a special event permit, Jim?
Well, that's what I didn't know, it's a road.
Oh, no, you know.
Facilities.
The instructions that are for either B, you know, for the second one? So I wasn't sure if this is, is that a special event? I would think it did.
You have a, she did fill out one. I don't know why.
It's not, not in the package, I know. You know, the things that I would be looking for is like the, this next one, we have, you know, signage, maps, people duration, things like that. And it does say three PM. You know, is this a road utilization? Like, when we have a road race, or is this for facilities that they use a building here? I'm a little unsure.
Yeah, so it says athletic fields, right? Which are being up here and the annex. Right? But in terms of the roads, I mean, there's an impact there, right?
Oh, big impact.
Yeah.
Not, not that, I don't have a problem, but I just want to understand.
Yeah.
I can forward the map of the race, not a problem.
Okay.
But it's probably the same as it has been in the past.
It's going to be exactly the same.
Yeah.
But it, it should be part of the package, though.
It does like it was, was it sent to you, Jim, but it didn't get to the server? Because what was in the server for the packet materials is what you have. But it sounds like there was a special event permit, separate from that. Yeah, she, she submitted that and I said, oh, you need to submit this. And I said to George, I'll send it back to you. Yeah. Well, then, see if we got proof of the law.
Okay. So should we table this until the next meeting?
I would suggest table, yeah, if there's, if there's a form that, that wasn't in here. And where it's not till October.
Yeah, the good news is you're so far ahead of schedule, which is awesome.
Yeah, it's awesome.
We have the ability to do that. So is that okay, Jamie, if we table this until next time?
Yeah, um, not a problem. Allison is also here. Allison, did you want to chime in?
Hi, yes, thank you guys for having us here. This is our first year taking over the road race, so we've kind of just gone off of all the stuff that we've been passed down. We do, I do actually have a copy of the maps and the roads right here with me, if you want me to hold up to share. Or if there's any, I mean, we kind of literally duplicated the applications that were done in the past. So please let us know if we've done anything or you need anything further because we're pretty new to this as well. But I'm trying to, trying to carry it on. I, I know that we put in for the police detail for the Apple Harvest Race. We, we just want to make sure that we're, we're doing our job well also.
Yeah, it sounds like there's just maybe misplaced paperwork that, that we didn't get a chance to review. So if, if it's all right with you, we'll table it till next time and straighten it out. I, I don't think there'll be any issue with it.
That sounds great. Is there any, and there's no conflict with dates at this point?
I think you're far enough in advance that you're all set, yeah.
If you could forward the maps.
Okay, yeah, if you could forward the maps, please.
Yeah, I can do that.
Great, thank you.
And is there anything else, Jim, that that you think was not included?
Just need the, the application for the, which I, I know I sent them and I know I sent it back.
Okay, all right.
And that will include things like signage, pre-race?
Yes, everything in the special event.
Okay.
So do you have a copy of the special event permit requirements?
Uh, is that available online?
I believe I sent it to you.
I think you filled that out, Jamie.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I filled out whatever Jim had sent me. And I sent that back.
Okay, I just wondered if you had the instructions that kind of explain the, the form in more detail.
Yes, included with the.
Okay.
With the.
All right, great. All right, then we'll, we'll table it until next time and Jim will be in touch if he needs any more information.
So, but it sounds like what we're looking for at this point is a map and then, and then waiting to hear back from the staff and police and Fire Chief. Please.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is.
Thank you, Allison.
Bye, Julie.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Thank you.
Special event application for local sports LLC for the Harbor Side Half Marathon in Flag Creek, November twelfth. Three. Another scheduled far in advance event, which we appreciate. So who do we have here for that?
Hi, my name's Eric Boucher. I will be the race director for this event this year.
Great. And any questions for?
Yeah.
Review on that?
Police details, all the answers, at least any I've been contacted, what's.
Yeah, so the details on the police and the Fire Chief is, is not included in your application?
Um, we have spoken to the police chief or sergeant Parento. And I should say, my colleague Evan DeLecky, who, who completed the application originally back in November, has spoken with him as recently as May twenty-second. And they've, I guess, you know, given their, their blessing for the, the new course that we're using this year. And we worked out the locations for the details for each officer. This year, we would hire five officers compared to three officers that we hired last year. So we've, I guess, I believe we've gotten the blessing of the police department.
So there's nothing in the application that shows us that, though? So I'm wondering, is that something typically chief wire or spend to you specifically?
So we may, if another officer's handling it, they may not know that they sent me the, okay.
Is there a way that the applicant can get the input and then forward it rather than having to rely on? Is that a fair thing to do? I mean, because really, they should be responsible for making sure in the application.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So if you could reach out to your colleague or whoever spoke with the police department and make sure that we have the details on the number of officers and, you know, where they're going to be stationed or whatever other details that were worked out, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, there was a reference, and I guess it wasn't this one. I thought there'd be two officers, but it wasn't clear where they're going to be.
See, I'm on that, any, any of the offices here, just.
Another question that I had is, it shows the water stations on the map. If we could have an address of where those are located, I think that would be helpful. Rather than just an icon.
Okay. Would you like that on the application or would you like to know it now?
Uh, if you could include it in the application, we'll table this until the next meeting as well, until we have these details. So if you could provide that in the application, that would be helpful, just because that's where trash would be generated and porta potties will be placed there, right?
Um, yeah, there would be two porta potties located there. Trash we would have picked up by our volunteers on the fly. We're just talking about water, paper cups for water.
Right, it's just.
And we'd have three garbage.
Anything else?
Um, yep, I guess we could put in the address in there. The, the general description of the water stop is in there and how we're handling trash, all that thing. Um, this was a situation where we, we applied for the permit way back in, I guess, early November of last year. And it wasn't until May that we, the police folks got to look at it. And we worked out where each of the, the actual locations would be for each of the five officers that we would hire. But we do have that information now.
Okay, so in the application for locations, it just says see attached and it just has the map. So if you could give a three address, that would be great.
Okay.
So you're saying for both the officers and for the, the porta potties? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else you want to say?
Got it.
You know, just an interesting thought, I mean, yeah, an address would be good, but seeing as it's something that, you know, it's a repetitive event. Presumably you'll be back next year as well. And the route will probably be the same. You know, if you were to integrate that right onto the map with the addresses, then if it's possible, then make it easier going forward next year.
Sure, understood. To list the address on the map where the water stops, locations are.
Yeah.
Name the police officers, is that?
You next year, that way we don't have to ask the same questions and, you know, circle back again.
Gotcha, okay, we can do that.
Well, I'm, I'm guessing that the police chief will probably, you know, name the same locations.
Yes, he would. I guess we've been talking to Sergeant Parento, I guess. Who probably does the, the events.
Okay. It was, it actually did the inside report.
I didn't either.
Yeah.
Are you good on this?
Yeah.
All right, if you could provide that information to the county clerk for the next meeting, we'll, we'll vote on it then. See if there's anything.
Okay.
Yeah. Jim, did you have everything you needed?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, I was make sure we get this out.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Have a good night.
All right. Okay, I'm D, review of draft municipal energy aggregation plan. And we have Denise and, is it Mark?
Yes.
Hello, how are you?
Excellent, and yourself?
Good, how are you?
I guess we're turning this over to you, right? Is it your show?
I guess I, I'll let Denise explain what, what's in front of the, the town.
Okay.
Right, so this is, this is for the municipal aggregation program for, this is for your electricity bill, the supply side of your electricity bill. And aggregating all the residents and small businesses or really anyone who's on basic service together, so you can go out and secure hopefully more favorable pricing than the utility. So this is just the first step in the process. It's a long process, but this, this step and the subsequent vote from the select board will close out the local process before you go on to the Department of Energy Resources for a short consultation and then on to the Department of Public Utilities with a full filing from the town, where you'll likely sit for longer than we would all hope, waiting for an approval to be able to launch the program for the town. So what you have in front of you is an aggregation plan and an education and information plan. A customer opt-out notice that would be mailed out to customers once the program launched. And you also have a draft electricity supply contract in that packet. And the requirement from the DPU is that those documents be posted for public review for thirty days. All comments need to be collected. And then after that plan is posted for thirty days, it would go, come back to the select board for a vote to approve the aggregation plan. And from there, it would go on to the state, like I said, the Department of Energy Resources and the Department of Public Utilities. I don't know if you have any questions about the, the program in general, we can certainly answer those too, but I didn't want to repeat if you, if you kind of already have that basic nuts and bolts information. So feel free to ask any questions.
I, I think it would be good if you could give a general overview for residents about, you know, what this program is, why it's important and, you know, why you're proposing it.
Sir, Mark, do you want to do the one-on-one?
So, so Mark Capitano of Five Mount Royal Ave, Marlboro, Mass. The, this program is, is basically, I consider it bringing choice that didn't exist this past winter. So lots of communities in the Merrimack Valley have these programs. So what this program does is it allows the, the community to go up and buy energy on behalf of the, of the small businesses. And most of the larger consumers, and I'm sure that the town in themselves already have purchased energy on behalf of their, their meters. So those customers are really out of the marketplace, but this is for residential and small commercial customers. That's who ends up being the, you know, the, the biggest portion of this. The marketplace just isn't as vibrant for those customers. So as a matter of fact, the Attorney General is saying, please stay away from those third-party supply offers. It's shark-infested water. So unless you're going to stay in tune to the, the supply contract that you're going to sign, stay away from that third-party stuff. But this is the town going on on behalf of all its residents and small businesses that are on third-party supply. So what would happen is once there was an approval, so there's a local process and a state process. And I'm here to tell you, unfortunately, I'm sure that the local process will be quick. You know, forty-five days, we have to hang the plan for thirty, thirty days, and then you guys will approve. After that. After that, things get a little slow. The D O E R won't be a problem. Within a month or so, they'll get a a meeting. And it's just a consultation that'll go quick. And then we're gonna, Denise will put together some massive filing for the Department of um Public Utilities. And that's when the the brakes get put on, unfortunately. That plan will sit there anywhere between thirty six and forty eight months uh right now uh waiting for an approval. And these are literally, these are uh cookie kind of plans that have been approved. I think we're on maybe eighty six or eighty seven uh for uh approvals and they're taking that much time to review. But this program would allow you to have a rate. So um I'm just gonna use someone right up.
Seven.
I also asked, when did it start?
I'm sorry?
I I think somebody was not muted. Go ahead.
Oh, so I'm gonna use uh like Salisbury, right? So Salisbury, back in the day, had signed a contract, just to give you an idea, just a choice. So in Salisbury, I want to make sure I'm giving you the correct information. Um, their rate is eleven point two five five. They've had that rate now um since May of twenty uh twenty three. There was a change in law until January of twenty twenty five. For this past winter, when unfortunately you you're part of a national grid community, rates spiked. Everyone that was in the aggregation there didn't, they didn't feel any spike. They just had that eleven cent rate. Here's the great news. You participate when you want to participate, meaning that if it's an opt out aggregation and everyone here in the select board needs to know that that's the hot button item. And just let me explain, before the program ever starts, we say, hey, here's the rate. This is the basic service rate. We mail everyone a a notice um out. Uh, we're gonna have, you know, it in the newspaper, we'll push out if if you guys use any social media, we'll also have in, you know, in person meetings. But in that scenario, we'll push out a a a notice. Here's the town rate. This is basic service. If you wish to participate, you need to do nothing. But if you do nothing, you'll automatically be enrolled in this program. So it's it's not an opt in, it's an opt out program. But I can tell you, when we're gonna start this program, we're gonna make sure that that when we start it, we're gonna be below the the rate. Then from then on in, basic service changes every six months. Your rate could be stable for twelve, twenty four, thirty six months. Someone that gets in the program, they can stay in as long as they want. They can get out on their meter read every other month, every six months, they could play the, you know, back and forth, any of those. But this is just another opportunity for the town to have a choice out there that does not have um that profit motive um that kind of involved in it. Where, hey, I got a three month teaser rate and then as soon as I sign up, my rate gets jacked up by, you know, five, six, ten cents or or whatnot. So the town will have a program that will have a stable rate that anyone can join whenever they wish. So if you have a situation like this past winter, if people, most of the uh participants stay in the program, somewhere between eighty five, nine percent of the participants will stay in the program just because of the favorable rates and the stability of of those rates. But if somebody wanted to get out, they could always get back in. So we want to make sure that they understand now, what does it mean to the end user, right? That's the big thing. Believe it or not, it's a single line item change. National Grid, agnostic to these programs, they no longer own generation. They're a poles and wires company, o- only all they do is hang the grid. This program is about an electron running through a a wire. And and the ability to, you know, use the marketplace foot to the town's advantage. So three years ago, much like Salisbury or say um, Haverhill, market conditions were fantastic. They went out three years and secured that rate. Now, they're gonna have to do something again next year. I don't know if ma- market will be uh more favorable or less favorable. Right now the market's a little elevated, but not like it was. I I expect this winter to be bad, but not like it was last winter, not that thirty two cents, more like somewhere between, you know, high teens and low twenties, which is still, from a historic standpoint, uh uh, you know, a a sharp stick in the eye. I hate to say it. It's gonna be a very, another bad winter coming. Um, but that's in a nutshell, that's really what the program does. So to the end customer, they don't need to do anything. If the lights go out, uh, it it's a call on National Grid. So uh, say they had a problem with their their um their account, you know, billing, National Grid. Problem with their meter, National Grid. For the most part, the there will be no reason to call other than to make sure that this is a legitimate program. Most of the issues are still going to be um through National Grid. It, you know, people's power goes up. Well, one of the big questions you're gonna get asked, well, what happens if the power goes out? National Grid's not going to come to West Newbury. That's not true. National Grid, it it again is agnostic to who delivers your power. If the power goes out, they don't come to the town buildings last because you're on out of third party supply. They just, their job is to get the grid back up and running. So that you don't need to worry about that. Their job is to to put the grid up. Again, this is about an electron. Um, you you know, and stabilizing rates that, just given the way that ever so, excuse me, that National Grid procures, you won't have that whipsaw rate if you don't want it. But again, people can opt out at any time. There's no fee or penalty. You're literally bringing a choice that did not exist last winter.
Mark, Mark, I have a, just a quick point tonight.
Yes.
You know, you you made the assumption that the town has a third party supply. We do not in fact have a third party supply. We we generate the majority of our power um with a uh solar installation in town. Um, but not all of it, and and we do currently um pay the basic service rate to National Grid for the balance of that. Actually, technically, we pay the basic service rate for all of our power and then we get credits through a PPA from the solar system and we and we um um, you know, that's credited. So we, there's, if I understand things correctly, there's no reason why the town could not choose to be a participant.
That that is one hundred percent uh correct, sir. I I just want to make sure that you understand. So i- in that scenario, when you have solar, it's kind of like um the uh the program on steroids and it it the knife cuts both ways, though. So let's just use last last year, we we'll say we we're in Salisbury, we use that eleven two rate. You would be paying eleven two when you were using energy, but National Grid would be on your account, the credits would be, you know, at that thirty three, eight, nine, one rate or what have you, because they always use basic service. But let's just use another time. So that's a giant win, right? Oh, that's a great thing. Let's just say we have eleven two and basic service came down to uh nine five. You would be paying the eleven two, but they'd only be crediting you uh that nine five. So it can go both ways, but but I just want everyone to understand, it will work seamlessly. It's not a problem. But it it's the accounting is is a little bit more enhanced. It works the exact same way for um for for commercial customers as it does residential customers.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for that explanation, because you actually kind of clarified my next question, which was for um, and I don't mean to get ahead of the game and I and I can ask this later, but I'll throw it out. Um, and it was relative to um existing um residential solar installations where I I just wanted to clarify that the uh credits, any any um uh and that metering credits will always be at the basic service rate for National Grid that that it doesn't at all correspond to your rates. So that basic, that that um uh, that credit will actually change twice a year. The credit rate per kilowatt hour will change twice a year based on the, you know, six month, six months from uh, you know, November to um to April and then maybe, you know, on the six month increments. Yeah, okay.
That is correct. That that is absolutely correct.
Does that make sense to what you said?
Yeah, so in the event that I'm on solar and my solar doesn't cover my entire electric bill, um, so then Colonial Power would kick in for the balance?
That say it with a little point two, like it is for Salisbury.
Yeah.
But if you're producing um more in a month and and so you have a net metering credit for the month, you'll be credited at the at National Grid's basic service rate. Which, as as Mark said, in the winter would have been, for those of just the solar, would have been an incredible bonus. Um, because um, you know, we we would have received, uh, of course, during the winter, we don't generally generate.
It's the, National Grid gets us all the time, right? The rate's high, but there's not much production. And then when the production's high, the rate's lower, so it's.
Right. So that was my question. If my solar doesn't cover it and I have an actual bill, I'm gonna be billed at Colonial Power.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Chris, I'm sure you have questions?
A couple.
All right.
When you're talking on this discussion, and I looked at the electric bill and there's a even a scenario in the packet, it's broken down between delivery service and supply service. I'm assuming that the delivery service numbers are all gonna stay the same, just the supply service that you're referencing?
A hundred percent correct. That that's that's the monopoly that National Grid has, and that's uh that's literally um governed by or or you know, the Department of Public Utilities rules on those charges. We don't have anything to do with that. It's simply the generation service charges that we're talking about.
Right, and when I looked at my bill, that's roughly fifty percent of the total cost of the bill. So any savings are only gonna be on half of the bill.
That is a correct statement.
So.
I can accept this winter um where you're the um.
There's only three on the supply services.
Yeah, but the basic service rate for National Grid was, you know.
Weather proportion fifty, yeah, so.
Correct.
That's correct. It was it was turned upside down. It was sixty thirty, but by supply.
Yeah. Um, so another question. This is an off out program. And when, if we agree to that and then we send it up to the residents in town, there's a sort of implied impression that we have endorsed the whole thing and that they should participate. Um, whether that's correct or not, I don't know. Um, how can, could it not be an opt in program instead of an opt out program?
So first, it's a, that's a great question. So the first issue is this statute, if we wanted to just do an opt in program, you could do it without going through this process. Because people would be opting in, right? The reason we have to go through this process is for the opt out nature of this, so that everyone's made aware ahead of time. The issue is the way the energy markets work, it doesn't give you the advantage that you're looking for in the market, because you're saying um, this is an opt in, so people are going to opt in. Well, how many people are going to opt in? How much power do we need to buy? We already, we've been doing this for about twenty years, so they're going to be able, the the people that bid on this will be able to give you a very aggressive price for this, because it's an opt out program. They know somewhere between three and seven percent will opt out and they'll they'll get all these customers. And that's that's the way, the way they, the reason those third party supply don't work is they they have no way of knowing who's gonna sign up, who's not going to sign up, how much power they need to buy. In these programs that we literally turn the the tables on the supply community and say, hey, listen, we'll allow you to serve our customers under these terms and conditions and for these, for these terms. And it's a wonderful thing, because that allows them, it allows us to create what we call a load profile. Gets all of the accounts together. Once you get approved, we'll put all the accounts together. We'll show them how you're using your energy, so forth and so on, over a twelve month period. They'll then extrapolate that out into a price and then we'll be able to get you an extremely, in the marketplace, I want to I want to be careful with attractive, but it will be a very competitive price is what I should say, because pricing is still very high. From a historic standpoint, we're still in an elevated um, in in an elevated market. You know, there's no nine or ten cent rates out there right now. But but it would be, you know, competitive.
So basically, we have in the opt out program, it's allowing you to gather a group of people who might not have opted in.
That that is correct. Yeah, that is correct.
Not really comfortable with that concept. I mean, they're just sitting there going, they throw their hands up and go, hey, the town said it's good. We're gonna take it. That's just uh, that's an odd way to to do it, I guess.
It it has to do with the way the energy markets work. Um, and they, I can say this, um, o- over the time, it's been very successful. I'm just saying, I I'm gonna take last winter out of the mix, because nobody knew that was going to happen. Nobody knows what Mr. Putin's going to do, but we've we've been able to to secure pricing at around eight or ten percent below um where where the utilities are. And given what's going on in the marketplace today, because there's so many communities in aggregation, that load that's on left on basic service is terribly dysfunctional and there's a large risk premium being put on that by suppliers. So as bad as it seems, I will say this, it's going to get worse.
So one question relative to saving, you said eight to ten percent. Is that generally what you'd be below National Grid? Um, and I just asked that because in the proposal, there's, say, three, maybe four places that states clear, savings and future savings cannot be guaranteed. So.
I I need to thank you very much for for stating that. So there is, there is no guarantees in the marketplace. What there is a guarantee is that that your your consumers can opt out of the program at any time if they're unhappy for any reason without fee or penalty. So it, what it does do, and and that's the Department of Public Utilities, your rate could be first for for twelve. You you can do it for six, you could do it for twelve, you could do it for eighteen, twenty four, thirty, thirty six. As uh we pointed out earlier, the utility rate is gonna change every six months. We can never guarantee savings, other than when we start the program, we're gonna make sure that, hey, listen, when we come out of the gate, we're below basic service, so that when you start the program, we'll be able to show you some savings coming out of the gate.
But then you're sort of banking on customers not evaluating each month. If they just automatically have auto pay on their bill or whatever, the bill gets paid and they go boom, boom, boom. The business model is built that I have to then check and see what National Grid would have charged me versus what I'm paying here, so I can make an educated choice whether to opt out of that.
But in in this scenario, you're one hundred percent correct. The good news is is we're gonna have a website and you can certainly go there now uh at colonialpowergroup.com. And what we try to do is make it as easy as possible for customers to find their rate and the basic service rate right in one spot, so that they can do an apples to apples comparison. So that, believe it or not, one of the other things that communities are using is, this helps them when it comes to um third party supply. So over this past winter, I'm sure you got as many phone calls and mailings and people knocking on doors. Um, this program gives you a benchmark uh against what what you're talking to, you know, about. I've had lots and lots of customers calling me and say, hey, listen, I have a third party supply contract here for us. I'm just making this up, for eighteen cents for thirty six months. Is this a good deal? I said, here's the, here's your cover price. It's good from here to there. What is gonna happen next? I'm not certain, but but that's a guarantee of eighteen cents for thirty six months. And they can then do some comparison shopping. It's a, it's a um, it's an education for certain, but um it it does, from from at least our experience, it allows us to enter the marketplace and hope, our goal here is to deliver savings. Can we guarantee it? We cannot. I I cannot guarantee savings. I wish I could.
It's pushing that responsibility to value the savings onto the customer every month, basically, is what it does.
Well, well.
If your rate slips above National Grid, everybody just keeps paying that bill, nobody knows.
Cor- correct, but you're assuming that National Grid is the price of energy and that's just two buys uh each year. So that that's not the price of energy. All they've done, they don't even, I I'll give you an example. Three years ago, National Grid, historically low prices. It's not National Grid's fault. The Department of Public Utilities says go out twice a year. All of our communities did thirty six month rates, you know, ten cents, eleven cents. They locked in. They they can't do it, so they bought six, six months. Well, excuse me, they bought fifty percent for twelve months and they they did that twice. And what did that do? That got you a very low rate for six months, which is wonderful, don't get me wrong. But what happened, what, we can take advantage of the marketplace, say, hey, wait a minute, this is historic times. This is very low. Let's hold on to this price for thirty six months. The utility can't. They're not using the marketplace to your advantage. They're managing a process and just a process. It's always short. It's twelve months, no more. This allows you to do, when you see good rates, you can, you you can evaluate those rates and stay or not stay. It's a just, I look at it this way, it's a choice that's professionally managed, that you didn't have the ability to uh exercise this past winter. Now, I cannot argue the fact, people that get into the programs normally like the stability and so forth, but if they don't, there is, there is a a way to get out. No one's trying to hold them in this program. This is a town program. We're not trying to hold them in. All we're gonna try to do is educate them, we'll help them get out of the program. Real simple, go on the website, make a phone call, sign the card and get out of the program. That's not a problem. But the other customers, given given the pain they've been through this this winter, I can tell you, there's gonna be a lot of happy customers. Um, when they start to see the stability, um, you know, as compared to what happens with basic service. And until we get some offshore wind, unfortunately, I I think the next couple of winters are gonna stay just as choppy, given uh, you know, the marginal price is LNG, that's a liquefied natural gas, that that's still a global market and we have to fight for for LNG with Europe right now, Europe and Asia. So it it's a, we we don't have enough natural gas in the wintertime to heat and create electricity, so we backfill the system with LNG. And that that's kind of the driver for the high prices until we get some, I'm saying to you, meaningful offshore wind build.
I I just had a question on that. So Colonial Power is the manager, I mean, how are you compensated? Is it a a fixed fee every year or is it dependent on the amount of savings or?
So it it it's. So it it it's, we get point zero zero one. We call it a mill or one tenth of a penny. So if the rate was, I I let's just use the eleven-two was the rate that came in. I I think I said that was a Salisbury rate. Our our rate would come in, we, everyone's bill would say eleven-three, if that was the price of electricity. Everyone's bill would say eleven-three. And what happens is um National Grid collects all the bills. And then they pay the supplier, um that eleven-three cents for all the kilowatts used, and then the supplier will pay us. The point zero zero one times all the kilowatts.
So it's a fix, yeah, so it's a fixed amount. It doesn't depend on.
It's actually not fixed, it's actually per kilowatt hour, but the amount is fixed, meaning it's always point zero zero one.
Right, but Mark, I think what you're comparing is per kilowatt hour. So it's it's a tenth of a penny per kilowatt hour.
That is correct.
Yeah, so so that works out to be um something less than one percent of the cost.
I was I was mostly curious if that changed over time, depending on how much you save, but it sounded like it's a fixed, yeah, okay.
It it is a fixed, it is a fixed fee, but it would depend on usage, so. So if it got real hot and the, you know, it's summertime and pools and those things, lots of time, we're we're a peak summer usage, so the usage might be a little bit higher, but. Some people have electric heat. Certainly their situation, they'd have, they'd be using uh more electricity in the wintertime than they are summer. And with electrification, a lot of people are saying, as we start to electrify everything, we're gonna become a winter peak. Um again, if you will.
Interesting. So, you know, I mean, one of the ways that I look at this is that for the um. The average household uses, say, ten thousand kilowatt hours a year. And bar, um so at a tenth of a penny per kilowatt hour. Um essentially, that's ten dollars a year to participate in the program. Um and. You know, with the opportunity to put savings to work that.
Your your math is spot on. The Department of Public Utilities only asked us to use six hundred kilowatts as an average customer. Which would then turn out to be sixty cents a month or seven dollars, twenty cents for the year. Just, I I just wanna make sure that. We're using the correct, your math is one hundred percent correct. If you use ten thousand kilowatts, that is exactly correct.
Yeah, questions, Chris? So the process from here is you take care of the notification and the mailing and all of that?
Correct. So once you have an order from the DPU and then you can, you can go out to the marketplace, look at some pricing. And once the town were to sign a contract with the supplier, what happens is um. We work with the supplier to get the mailing out. We'll get the basic service list from National Grid and then a notice, there's a sample notice in that um packet with the DPU-approved content. We'll go out to everyone who's on basic service at that time, letting them know that this program is launching and say with uh. Say your November meter read. You'll, the notice would go out in the middle of September for a start in November. And it would say that these are the, these are the town's rates, the town's rates are offering against the then current National Grid rates. And if you do nothing, you will be automatically enrolled, but you have the opportunity to opt out in the next thirty days. And like Mark said, you can, there's a post, um there's a postcard in that posted page envelope. You can sign it, stick it back in the envelope and mail it. You can make a phone call to either Colonial or whoever the winning supplier is at that time. Or you can go online and opt out if you don't want to be enrolled and you will never be enrolled in the program. Anyone who doesn't opt out um is enrolled in the program. Um at that time. And and like Mark said, there'd be press releases and information sessions and. You know, we we'd make sure everybody had FAQs and all that information during program launch. But yes, Colonial would handle that. Obviously, the town would be involved in every step we take, but Colonial would handle uh the creation of the mailing and sending it out. And making sure the supplier gets all the accounts enrolled correctly, et cetera.
I have actually four more questions. Um I guess first one is um. In the um, I don't remember which of the documents, you know, there's obviously several documents in the packet. Um uh one of them reads, media outreach will continue through local cable television shows, newspapers, internet, sorts of. So um I'm assuming that we would be able to support the local television. The cable television of Congress. And hey, do you have any sense of that? If um, I I know there is a cable committee, but um is that something that. You're likely to support here easily, the um advertising this on local cable television?
I would want to ask out of that. I know there's a presentation that he puts through of different informational slides, adding slides.
Okay.
Uh I'm not sure, um you know, I don't know beyond that. I I think we could produce. Programming or if they produce programming.
Yeah, I've seen Denise nodding her head, so it sounds like maybe you have programming already.
Well, we can get, we can certainly give you text to run through the screen or we can, Mark has sat down, we've done Q and A's before. If if somebody from the town wants to sit down and kind of what we're doing here, questions back and forth for folks to get answers. Um we've done that numerous times and that's aired on on cable. So what whatever the town wants, we can accommodate either.
Okay, great, thanks.
And normally we'll do an information, an in-person information session, just so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, lots of times, you know, maybe at the Council on Aging or something like that, just because, you know. That 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 group of our customers normally are are most concerned. We're happy to go out and meet in person, explain what we're talking about. So that before we leave, everyone has every answer that they they need.
Yeah, it's helpful to do that after the mailing goes out. Folks have the mailing in hand. They come to the session. Why did I get this? What do I need to do? Um here's all the information you need to make a decision in the next, you know, thirty days if you want to be in or out. Like Mark said, beyond that. You can certainly opt out or in at any time. You're not held in the program, but at least folks will have the information at program launch to make a decision at that time.
And and Denise, I I think I heard you say this, but the mail doesn't go out until. After DPU has signed up and everything, which I think you said could be thirty-six to forty-eight months, once it even gets to them, which is still. Months away. So just in terms of people watching or any press coverage, just everyone understand this isn't gonna happen. You know, this is gonna take years.
Right, right.
That's, Jen, that's a great point. I wish it was quick. It's one of those things that we say, try not to do any education right now because it will be wasted on. The unfortunately, uh you know, a a very long delay at the department. E- e- everyone forgets what happens. And once you sign a contract, now it's imminent and then we can really, you know, get it in the newspaper, get it back in front of the council and all of those things so that. Everyone's abuzz at the same time.
Okay, thanks. Um another question, um. Let's see, I've got a note here, the program website will note if the town has chosen to fund the personnel costs. Associated with an energy management position through an operational ladder. So I mean, that's something this board, if assuming this all goes forward, which um I'm obviously hoping will. But there um, you know, there may be an opportunity um. To fund some portion of a of an energy management position. Um that would essentially save other people, save people. Could save people, you know, residential um energy users money through other programs. Or a partially funded position that would do that. So um, you know, think back to the, it said that adder could be up to. Um a a tenth of a penny. Uh per kilowatt hour, which, you know, doing doing really rough numbers uh. You know, at at ten dollars, um you know, assuming again, ten thousand kilowatt hours a year. Uh and ten dollars a year for an account. Um and if there were fifteen hundred accounts that participated. You know, that would be potentially fifty thousand dollars towards a um a position that would focus on. Energy matters um to benefit the town's residents.
I don't recall seeing that.
Okay, it's on page forty-seven of the of the packet, uh the PDF version of the packet.
Okay.
Um uh um and then um. So, just another sort of an observation. Uh and again, this is in our packet, um this is a, in the consumer notification letter. Uh it reads, Dear West Newbury Basic Service Consumer, and I looked at that and I said, if I was somebody getting that, I'm not. Unless it was really clear, I wouldn't sure what I was getting, what the basic service was. I'm sure you've used it before. I'm just wondering if it would make sense to say basic electric service consumer.
Sure, we can make that change.
Might just make it more readable or in any community, um you know, for somebody to immediately recognize that you were talking about.
Okay.
And my final question was um regarding ownership and use of consumer data. It would be, you know, uh security breaches, data security breaches are obviously a big topic. Um or have been, probably will continue to be a big topic. Um and I'm just curious about what provisions um you have for data security. Um because there will be, you know, certain data regarding individual accounts. Um transferred between between companies. And I'm I'm just curious. You know, it's not a question that I would expect an answer on tonight, but go looking forward, it's something we want to be sure that. If we were promoting participation in this program, then we were really confident about the data security.
It's a, it's become a very big issue. It's a great question. One of the things is, we don't, we don't share any of the um. Actual consumer data with, when we're out to bid and everyone's bidding, everyone's just getting an account number and some usage. So they don't have any idea of what they have in front of them until we go to actually enroll those customers. So and then at that point, we're using, you know, SFTP and only sending over a file that has. Um you you know, a a key in it and u- using encryption so that. The first file goes over, it doesn't have any, and the data, the second file goes over, it's an encrypted file. We then send over the key so that they can. Um you know, match up the two files so that everyone is protected now. We have not had, I'm gonna knock on wood right now, we haven't had a problem as of yet. But I I I just said that out loud, right? So I'm sure I I have a a no-no coming here, but at this point. We have not had an issue using the the current protocols. I don't know if um, i- i- you know. If anyone has an issue, we're happy to make sure that all of the data is as safe and secure. It's a big deal to us. That it is uh safe and secure. And as I mentioned, I I may have just jinxed us, but. Up to this point, we have not had any data breaches nor have we, you know, lost any um data, uh you know, moving things around. So um we'll continue to listen to the consumer, uh you you being the boss, uh you know, you're the boss of this program. So we'll follow any um what I'll call, you know, data security issues that that you'd like to implement. You know, make no mistake, we're not here, I'm not an expert in data security. I can just tell you that any time that we've talked about data, people are comfortable with what we've done. But if you happen to have an expertise there, we're also more than willing to uh follow through on anything you think might be more advantageous than we're doing.
Yeah, no, I wasn't applying any particular expertise, just just awareness that there is a nation, so.
Yeah, a- agreed. No, no, we've we've heard lots of them, lots.
So are we ready to vote?
Um are we voting? It's just.
We have to vote to post it first.
Yeah, so the next step would be with the board's, we said, we'd post this to the uh website. We would set up a dedicated project page under the town projects page and build out information. That way, as new information comes in, there's a logical landing place for it. Uh so in the draft notice that. Colonial had sent sent over, I pushed back the uh dates from the initial draft to with the start of what, next Monday. Uh so assuming that's agreeable, that uh we make sure that by next Monday morning, everything's located on the website. We obviously work with Denise and uh Mark, make sure where the links are and and so forth. And then uh our office, I I think with the town clerk, we would be compiling all the comments that come in. Uh make sure that those are all uh provided to to both the board and Colonial and probably post it online. Uh I think we, as we have in the past, we redact people's email addresses and things, but. And then the thirty days happens to what happened to run uh the Friday before one of your meetings in August, so. That would allow you to take it up after the thirty-day comment period.
Do we need that town council look at this document at some point?
Um that's, we we haven't, so.
Pretty big contract.
It is a big amount of legal.
Before I said, I'd like to have that say good or bad.
Yeah, yeah, no, that would be great to have that part of the public comment. If we send it to them, we could send it to them first thing tomorrow and. And ask for their comments back. Uh ideally, within the thirty day, in case there's any.
Yeah.
Just just a note on that, that draft electric service agreement you're looking at was um created in consultation with KP Law. So it, I don't know that that's what the town uses for for legal, but um they are municipal council and they they did. That that contract, so uh for the city of Newburyport.
Great, thank you.
Angus, just so that you're aware, we're we're all for, we don't have any trouble, but if there are any charges, I don't know if you have. Um internal um legal or you have to go outside. We're we're happy to pay for that so it doesn't end up costing the town. We just want to make sure that, we believe you're fully covered, make no mistake, uh it's a brand-new rewrite within the last. Uh year or so. It took us about a year to get all the uh, everything correct in there, so we feel very comfortable, but if somebody. If you wanted to have your attorney, we don't want it to cost you, but we just want to make sure that the town is comfortable that. What Colonial has in front of of them to sign off on uh i- is protecting the consumer, the town and so forth.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah, make a motion that we um post the notice on the town website and. And do the other required advertising steps, which I don't require all that entails with his points.
Post for public comment.
Right, yeah, for public comment.
And have council review.
And 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 have the council review um for it to be posted ideally by um, well, target. Post is by next Monday, so.
Next second, further discussion. All favor. Great, all right, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a review of F Y twenty-three line item transfer requests. So do you want to start with the table or I don't want to go through these, Angus?
Uh sure, yeah, I can just put that whole, put the summary memo up on the screen and uh. Maybe, you know, we can go through each of them, or if the board just asks questions, some of them are obviously very small amount, others are are much more substantial. Uh and Jenny's here uh showing me for this, so if there are any questions, one or the other of us can. Surely answer them. And with the board's referral. Uh these would be sent over to the finance committee, which is scheduled to meet this Thursday. And I plan to have a transfer to do with wire endorsement of both the slot board and they come.
So typically, the slot board votes first.
It's varied over the years. Uh this year, it was partly based on just how the calendar felt.
Yeah.
It's it's very difficult, uh because some of these numbers are still moving. Uh you know, we still, it's, we can process F Y twenty-three invoices right up until. July fifteenth, and while we and the department have really worked to try to get the invoices in. Um it's it's a moving target, you know, right up until the end, so uh we always try to pick a timing that's late enough that we can do. Ideally, uh cor- correct information. Uh and still have that within the July fifteenth statute. So I did meet with Jenny today and go through everything in detail. We had met last week. We've been, we keep an eye on this throughout the spring. But we've met last week, had a work session, then I met again today based on the specific numbers in front of you. Uh and everything is as was uh presented except for. The two board of health ones uh on page two of the memo. Uh there's no material change, but there were invoices that came through for both solid waste. And recycling and public health nurse, all of which have been processed in the last, you know, day or two. So the actual balances are slightly different, so I'll just point out to you what I uh mean. So basically, the uh. Uh yeah, the shortfall on recycling, which is shown as ten, one fifty-six seventeen. Is actually nine thousand five sixteen seventy-one. Uh so about forty uh. Four hundred fifty dollars left. And the remaining, uh and so the amount requested for transfer. Uh and I'm sure a few things going on. So so there was a big bill that came in for waste collection, which we knew would, the June bill for solid waste. So that remaining balance shown as forty-two one one is actually eight thousand five seven eight. Uh there was about thirty. Thirty-two thousand of expenses. So the remaining balance is eight five seven eight, so we're proposing uh to transfer, to basically zero that out. So eight thousand five seventy-eight will be proposed for transfer from waste collection to recycling. And then the balance of nine thirty-eight seven one, nine thirty-eight seventy. And then the balance of 9,3871, 9,3871 is proposed for transfer from public health nurse to recycling. And the remaining balance in public health nurse, a little bit last again, because we got the June invoice, is not 5375, it's 4975. So again, not material, but I did do an updated version for the finance committee, which I sent over to Rob earlier today. And I marked and striked through underlined, just so that the clear record, but I, I don't think those are material changes. And in every instance, we were able to keep things either within the same budget category or within something that's very close. So for instance, town clerk and board of registrars are, are, are two different sections of the budget, but they're very closely related. And then also with. Let's see, there was one other. Oh yeah, street lighting is, is actually listed as a, as a separate section of the budget than DPW, but it's always been budgeted the same. So, so basically we're able to keep everything within the same section of the budget. So the, the bottom line held in all of the sections of the budget.
Oh, and Medicare.
Oh yeah, Medicare and room insurance, that correct. Yeah, there was a small bridge.
There is a question. Can we just run through them one by one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I got a silly little question on some.
Sure, yeah. Okay, so the first is a, and I'll just use this, you have the, the forms and check more than errors. But so the tax title proposal was overspent by $529.60. The proposal was to transfer from finance department expenses into tax title now.
A question on that. Those costs kind of get recovered, obviously, even when that's the properties and those get built in.
Yeah, if the, if the lien is ever redeemed, they, the cost for any legal or advertising would be borne by the current tax.
Eventually, hopefully that comes back.
Correct. Now, we are dealing with a couple of instances of properties that are owner unknown. So we do not expect to ever recover those money specifically. But yes, we, everything we track in the expenses is associated with. To the extent it is associated with a specific property, like a legal ad or legal advice, that would be a recover of.
Are we going to vote each individual one or we just want to do it as a group once we run through?
The president of the board.
Yeah, so are we referring it to the finance committee or?
Yeah, let me look at what the actual form says.
I think we have to, we're not meeting against the 20s.
Yeah, you do need to, you do need to.
The 15th, is that right?
Yeah.
Is it 15 business days or the 15th?
No, it's the 15th. So. So the.
We can get time to pick up and square it up, I'm sure.
So the form calls for the select board data meeting, number present, voting approved by majority. Or if it's did approve, and then it's got to be signed by the chairperson. So it is a vote to approve.
Okay.
Well, do you want to go through and ask your questions and then we can vote?
Yeah. I thought we just kind of all, the whole thing.
Because if you don't, you're very much happy.
At 2,894, that was partially driven by new requirements of the Voting Act, which. The primary driver of that was actually the purchase of an additional poll pack. That was a suggestion that came out of the spring town meeting because of the wait times. So we bought the poll. If we could have just, you know, charged it there and there's no issue. But Jenny and I met, we felt, you know, it was purchased for that purpose. And so it's a truer accounting to have it hit that line rather than pay it out of technology and have it kind of more buried. So, so the proposal. There was short staffing in that office.
My question on that, why was that on this?
Okay, yeah, 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 it was a vacancy of the assistant town clerk position was vacant for a couple of months.
That'd be a lot of my questions, because a lot of these are significant numbers.
Yeah.
Just looking forward, rather than looking if there's a reason.
Right, right. So the next one is numerically the biggest amount. This was where we overspent the police overtime by over 110,000. As you know, that's because of a, a long-term, you know, senior officer who's been out unable to work. And those positions, those shifts have all needed to be filled. So both in FY 22 and again in FY 23 for the entire fiscal year. You know, the office wasn't available to work. So that, that's kind of been a substantial cost, which going into the fiscal year. We honestly had no expectation that, we thought that was going to be resolved, you know. So anyhow, that, the, the good news is the overage and the OT line is more than offset by, offset by underspending in the police salaries and wages of the school resource officer lines. Again, because of girds of understaffing as well as with the SRO. Because Manny was in the academy through the end of the calendar year, he didn't actually begin SRO until January. So Mike Wire, who obviously had been SRO, wasn't being paid out of that line. So that, so the two, it's still within the police total staffing is still within the budgeted amount. But it was just a lot more toward overtime with base salary and wages. So the proposal would be to basically zero out police salary and wages. So that would show us. Line, particularly about 42, $4,200 left in there. Dispatch overtime was a much more modest overspending of 5,000 or 1,000. That salary and wages. So the dispatcher overall staffing is still. Town building operating expenses is overspent by 16,434. Proposals to transfer that from town building improvements, which has a remaining balance of almost 30,000.
And that separate from the warrant article that, that was passed for improvements?
Correct, yeah, that's, that's paid out of the article.
Now, this was confusing because the wording says explanation for transfer. I think it's misworded. Says offset by underspending within DPW street giving repeat line. It's supposed to say town building improvement.
Okay, yeah, I'll need to fix that. I, there, yeah, okay, that was. The forms went through a couple of different drafts. Was something I didn't. Yeah, I see.
That's right. And I was trying to figure that one out.
Yeah, it was, yeah, yeah, I want to throw a couple of rounds to produce this.
So relative to the city and town building improvements, it was 51,000, only 21,000 been expended these to 30,000. So that would imply that we're not doing some improvements. Lot of money left there.
Yeah.
That line out of next year?
Well, I think, you know, we'll, we'll need to work with the DPW on, I, this, this is a, I mean, you know, from your time on the ThinkCom. The DPW is. And I know it's, it's a challenge every year of budget time for the director to try to forecast what the needs are going to be. So I know some of the numbers in terms of the. Danny, you know, in the prior four years when we had the, when we had Wayne here, he took a lot of the numbers that had been constant for a number of years and kept them constant. And the way Jenny and I look at it is when an expense comes through, we want it coded in the correct line. Not to, I mean, there are some things that you can argue could fit here or they could fit there from an accounting standpoint in terms of where the expenses properly. Want it to be in the most logical line so that we come away with the actual numbers that are reflective of what it actually costs. So I know we talked and we talked anywhere on the ThinkCom about, you know, in a lot of towns, these wouldn't even be line item transfers because they're, they're basically, the line is DPW. But, but that's not the way it's, it is here. So everyone, separate line.
No, my bigger concern is that those 50 grand, you know, the buildings, is it not? I just want to make sure we're not missing something due to employees not being able to get to or, or anything like that. I just.
Yeah, or it helps set up for when you budget for next year, but you want to kind of know why the number turned out the way it did.
You know, we, we, for, you know, our work on this, we ran detailed reports for every one of these accounts to look at what the actual expenses were. And that can be provided. And I don't know, Rob, if you think ThinkCom's going to want that.
Oh, no, 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 no.
You know, it ends up with, with some of these, you end up with, you know, a lot of transactions that wish to really analyze that with. You know, would, if we could do it. You know, without having a finance director, there's not really someone who's like crunching the numbers to that degree.
No, I don't need that level of detail. I just make it so.
But we definitely looked through, I mean, we. Expenses and make sure it's the proper expense, but.
But to answer this question, when we go to do the budgeting next year, you always look to see not only what was budgeted in the prior year. But the question should answer itself then. And then you have the ability to come up with the correct number for the following year. I take your point.
Yeah, right, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, but yeah, I mean, but in this one in particular, the town building improvements, it could have been a single project that
Didn't get done.
That didn't get, for whatever reason.
Right, so you, you try and analyze the past and predict the future. Sometimes it uncouples.
Yeah.
I just wanted to let you know too that we do have encumbrance against the highway sidewalks and trees for 15,000. So there are some invoices projects that have begun that aren't complete. So we will be spending down that highway.
Be asking about that, we'll get to it each other.
That's, that's, that's the A B treatment?
Um, no, that's the seal cracking, seal cracking, uh, seal crack.
Correct seal.
Spectio.
Yeah, that, that comes up.
Yes.
But that's a really.
Talking about the town buildings.
No. Because that's another big number. I'm just going to jump on that next. She just caught up.
Yeah, but that's a really good clarification though, that I could put a footnote in here. Because while this is what, I put in the numbers that show up in the accounts, you know. But with encumbrances and things, that's, that's not reflected here. So there is an additional. So the balance, what's shown in the highway side look at trees, the actual balance is quite a bit less than that.
Which the next one is a similar situation, which is street paving and repairs. It's 41,817 in that account.
Yeah. Yeah.
No encumbrances?
No. No, so we had, we had rap money and we had, did you rewrite the?
We had a couple of things going on there. One was the rap money came along at the end of state and that was 135,000, something like that.
So the work got done.
The work, and that, I think we only left, we left under a thousand dollars. It might've been under $500 on the table. We almost fully utilized the rap.
But so next year you'll need that 55 grand. That's what I'm saying. Things you have to understand.
And those are really, those are really important because year on, year on, year, when people are looking back, it's, you know, it's hard to remember all that stuff. But that's exactly right. A lot of things.
But during the budgeting process, we typically run transactions. That's, that's where we get into the transaction, like, because it's a great reminder.
Well, right, but, but I think, you know, the, the main point on this one is that but for the rap money, these budgets, whatever, didn't hit. Right. And those don't show up in the.
You would have, he just filled in that you got all the revenues to cover that.
Yeah, because those are all not paid out of the operating budget, they're paid out.
I'm reacting solely to what's in front of me here, not the budgeting process. I'd like to remind everybody that you're not looking at a list of all of the underages also exist.
Oh, yeah.
So, so.
And we will provide that, but we don't provide that till we really close our books. Because otherwise the numbers, you know, you got an additional AP warrant this week. So it's, it's always a moving target until it stops moving. And even then, it's real, once the audit's completed, one of the numbers are really final.
So a deep dive here isn't really that necessary.
Well, it's good to, we get the general description.
Correct, the general. And so, yeah, I mentioned there's two things. One is the rap money, the other on the paving. We had a pavinger under contract and they withdrew, you know, unfortunately like two weeks before Wayne left. So we're, we're still working on, we're very close, but we're still working on updating the bid documents to rebid paving to, to try to get that done this calendar year. But, you know, if that work started in May, as we hoped it would, that, you know, we wouldn't, I think, see any money left there.
I think I've only got one more question.
Okay, I just want to point out something that I think I understand. The, the next, the bottom line, item on this page, the 36555. You know, if that was, if that. You know, that's a fairly trivial amount in terms of all of our electricity costs. And because of the credits, remember we were talking about how the solar got credits at the basic service rate for national grid. So during the winter, the solar over on Main Street was generating huge credits. Which probably partly explains the reason why this number is not a lot of, kind of, a lot of.
And then, yeah, there are a number of DPW lines. I don't know if you want me to go through each of them or.
Did you have another question?
Just on the health ones, I do just want to know for the record that the recycling line was modified during the FY 23 budget process between the board of health and finance committee. And the board of health did vote the change. They, they did approve the change. But they did have that direction or at the, you know, urging of, of both my office and the finance committee based on what was going on, who were second cost at that time. So they, they were always a little bit cautious as to whether the 10,000 was under budgeted. In fact, it was. So, and I also want to make the point that they did transfer at our urging some money from that revolving fund that we talked about. So what you see here isn't the total shortfall. What was the amount, 12,000? Okay, so we did reach, when, because we've seen this number, you know, coming for a couple of months. So Jenny and I reached out to board of health to kind of strongly urge them to pay some of that shortfall out of that revolving fund. I do think, you know, it highlights this, what I think we talked about before, with these revolving funds, kind of where the authority rests. Where, you know, maybe it's such, maybe I would pay all of it. But I think, what was?
11,000.
Okay, so I, I think that's something that warrants further discussion. That specific fund where it was created fairly recently, it built up a pretty good balance pretty quickly. Who's your vote?
Rob, number 20 for Max.
Let me say, actually, you know what? I have my, I have my handy chart of accounts right here. I, I never remember to bring this, but today I did, so.
And, and the purpose for that account was for the balance?
Current balance is about 14, or 14,689, 14,689. And that reflects debit of 17,7, including the $11,000 transfer. So if not for that transfer, you know, it would be 20, you know, almost $26,000. And that was only set up in the last two fiscal years. So that's a lot to build up in a short amount of time.
What's the intent for that recovery?
Well, the intent, as we understood it when it was established, was that it was going to be for, to be a source for direct expenses for which the town is solely to pass through. So if, for instance, you want a second barrel, it's going to cost you as a customer, a hundred dollars to get a second barrel. Rather than you paying Mellow, you're going to pay it more to help, which is they're going to pay another dollars to Mellow. So there's no net, you know, we're, the town's just a passcode. We're taking your hundred dollars and buying the barrel. So that's why we were quite surprised, you know, you'll recall back in the, you know, winter. We were quite surprised to see this balance building up because when it was presented in the town meeting, we had always understood it was solely for that purpose of the. You know, you'll recall back in the, you know, winter, we were quite surprised to see this balance building up, cause when it was presented to the town meeting, we had always understood it was solely for that purpose of to. Handle those kinds of pass through expenses.
Does that need that bigger number in that reserve or?
No, and and if you have that kind of balance, it ought to be used to pay actually eligible costs by perspicacity, but.
So were they just using the regular budget to pay those costs?
Yeah, yeah.
And they'd be convinced to use more to watch this?
Well, I Jenny, remind me if you would, where, cause I know we had a number of discussions with them about that, and I know we had initially reached out to the Board of Health and we became aware of the whole region. How would the eleven thousand arrive that?
So it says, after a brief discussion, a motion was made to authorize eleven thousand for the requested expenditure, noting that meeting funds in the curbside revolving account are needed to support future trash recycling and food composting programs.
So that doesn't sound like a pass through setup. It sounds like something different.
Yeah, right.
All right, so more discussions needed.
How does more revenue get into that fund? Where was the revenue generated in that?
Well, that was the other question to get was, yeah.
It's stickers and um.
Was it the bulk items?
Bulk items, no, I.
We went through, back back when this came up in February, I know that we pulled all of the revenue turnover reports for a year and a half. We spent a fair amount of time digging into it. That was four and a half months ago. It's hard to recall, but I do know that at the time we were. Revenues that should have been coming in as general revenue were being mis-received to this revolving fund. And um so we. No.
No, but I mean, you're on the, you got the right question, you know. So somehow we're able to keep making those funds, depending on. Where they're coming from, you might then decide that the best use is, for instance, if it's for stickers and and the other stuff, it might be to apply to whatever costs are associated to that.
What's the same question? I thought it asked on a Priccom. What are the resources that are going to pay these?
Exactly.
Yeah, I'm going, so why have they use more here? That's something nobody keep.
It is. I I think it is. I mean, I think we're 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 looking at uh, you know, what's the total amount? Nine thousand, one, you know, ninety five hundred dollars, give or take. And the balance there is, well, what did I say? Fourteen, almost fourteen and a half thousand.
They could pay this whole.
Yes.
Obridge and still have a significant balance.
Still have, uh, that's what you say.
And and you you don't know what balance they should be maintaining.
So do we have, we don't have?
In other words, you could you could use the total receipts in a year to offset the expenses for that year. And not not totally, but I mean. So what's 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 the reason to not apply all of the funds?
That's what I'm saying, right?
This is an ongoing conversation.
Right, but isn't that at the Board of Health's direction? Can they?
It it is, and I actually had a discussion with with Jenny today on on, you know, let's say. When we turn over the books to the to the auditor, and if there's something that's overspent, how big a deal is that? Cause I know what the the law says. I think from an account standpoint, it's a big deal. I don't know. Uh, when when I was up in Maine, like, there were some things that were, and and the auditor would say, oh, they're not material. And this would be fairly material. It's a pretty.
It it matters to the Board of Health. They wanted to have a bigger number there on the recycling number in the first place, right?
They did, and that's why I led with that point is is, but but they did vote it. They didn't, it wasn't imposed upon them. They did vote, and I have an email from Blake. You know, last January saying the board voted to reduce our request, because they had initially proposed a budget of forty five thousand. Which as of that time, January twenty twenty one, the recycling cost maybe was something like fifteen hundred dollars. I remember calling Blake and said, Blake, why are you proposing forty five thousand? Like, there's no basis based on why it been going on in the recycling market. And they ended up some, there was some back and forth and discussions and Priccom, and and if they ended up on the ten thousand, that ended up being too low.
So without a specific need for the money in the reserve fund, I would think this would be a great place to use it.
I agree, but it also needs to look at how revenues are being assigned, you know, and how people are being spent, cause it's not serving the revolving. Just generating money.
Right, right, then let's start revolving. We'll get to the motion now.
Well, but my my thought is that we can't dictate the revolving. We would just sit on it.
Right, that's all, yeah. I suggest that they might wanna consider using it for that.
Or you're gonna suggest that we do deny the transfer? Cause that, cause remember, gets done, has to be done by the fifteenth, right?
When do they meet next?
And we want some.
You don't need to do that right now.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Uh, yeah.
If you have, I'm asking.
The veterans, I thought we had addressed that previously. Veteran moved into town. I thought that, actually, we had addressed that, and I.
We we had uh.
This could be a different one, I don't.
No, it was a different one. Actually, it was a different different person, yeah.
And then same question there, the Memorial Day expense fund, nothing was expended?
Yeah, that's. Uh, when I started, of course, I started in the bicentennial year, and they had carried five thousand dollars in the budget that year for Memorial Day parade. And we ended up using just about all of it. We used it. Uh, we had some. Uh, participants that require fee, I forget exactly, but I know we had the Shriners, the Army Band. I forget exactly which ones had fees, but some. There were some number of participants in the twenty nineteen parade who paid a fee. We haven't paid any fees for the last several parades. Uh, also in the bicentennial year, we we purchased new fun things and new flags and some things to really just make everything pop. Uh, we have all of that stuff. We bought, it's durable, it's multi-year. At some point, we'll have to replace it, but we haven't had to for the last couple of parades. Uh, the food afterwards, the the fire, you know, they they do that. Uh, they don't charge us. And I I remember telling them wire a couple of times. You can charge us for that, like to buy the burgers and dogs, but they they never had.
Burgers and dogs.
There, there you go. So so, you know, I, going into the budget year, I always scratch my head about when when a parade, cause I wanna make sure we, and it's not an exorbitant budget, twenty two hundred dollars. I wanna make sure that we have some amount of money, but I think it's, you know, does the day come that we don't even have a Memorial Day expenses line, and we just. Maybe that's part of us elect board operating, but or, you know, it's just, I think some of our issues that we have to pick granular detail and some sections of a budget. That that maybe you end up, whereas you could hedge against something else if that was aggregated. Uh, so, and you know, you saw a grade, we did everything as great a grade as as we ever do, and it just didn't, we didn't. You know, it occurred any direct expenses.
Really suggestion of some of that money is how some of the flags have been out there many years, they're difficult tatted, and I know some are actually missing, so. Be nice indeed to replace some of them.
Okay, that's that's first I've heard of that, but that's, yeah.
We, we, um, this is, I guess, what, ten years ago, you paid, you got a flag and a plaque on the pole?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The one, bar this down Main Street, my wife did for her father. There's no flag anymore, cause they don't have enough that they're missing. So there's actually a couple of poles and missing flags, and then the flags are tatted, so.
Okay.
It does not.
Next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we're in this new budget year, and we did, we did carry funds for the Memorial Day parade, for Memorial Day expenses.
I would recommend you write that line, you know, maybe that's what happens.
Yeah, and I know in the past, in a couple of years, you know, we've had uh, we've bought, we've worked with the Veterans Affairs to purchase additional uh flags for the sanitaries that were. You know, beyond what we're budgeting, cause we, there was a need and it was a logical place.
Any other questions?
Just to stay, so as not to muddle things up this year, I'll. Make a discussion on recycling, but I think next year they ought to start thinking about how to use their revolving fund to offset items like that. Sure that Priccom probably is taking a brief look at that.
As Angus has already done.
Yeah, we we can invite uh Board of Health rep to come to a future meeting, not like front burner, but over the next, you know, a couple of months uh before, you know, before we get into that. Yeah, that that'd be helpful, isn't it?
I'm just thinking, if we sit down and say, take that out of your, you know, we're gonna not do that, they don't have a timeframe to adjust it right now, so let's just.
That is a good.
With the understanding that that's something that's being looked at.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion and we prove all the uh, find out if transfers as listed.
Second. For the discussion.
Not as listed in the packet.
Right, there is just a a change that I described to the two Board of Health. That's presented.
As presented, thank you.
Right, over to Dana.
Hi, hi. Thank you for that.
Jenny, that work. All right, I don't know if Sam's still with us.
Sam is still with us.
Sam, so.
Go with him. It's all good.
Well, Jenny. Bye.
Thanks.
All right. So how are we gonna do this?
All right, so I had I had briefed Sam a little bit on the discussion we had last time, and I. Had summarized that, you know, the the direction I got from the last discussion was. Uh, you know, it seemed like the board was uh pretty comfortable saying that we don't like the current bylaw. We should definitely repeal it. The question is, do we try to replace it with a different short term rental bylaw, or do we just repeal it altogether? And I didn't frankly feel as like comfortable with the details of all this to really give you good advice on that. Uh, so I met with Sam and Sue, and Sam had had volunteered to come and speak with board. He's he's. Very knowledgeable, both from his direct experience as well as talking with the town planner in terms of where where she's coming from, and he's also been following the ADU. You know, process that accessory dwelling, you know, process for the planning board very closely, so. Uh, I don't know if you wanna start with uh inviting Sam's comments or start with your thoughts and then get his uh response for that.
Um, Sam, if you have comments, I'd like to hear your general perspective.
Uh, so in talking with Sue, and we're somewhat on the same page with this, uh, I have a a good amount of experience with. Uh, short term rentals being, uh, having spent fifteen years with Plum Island as part of my district, so we have. It was uh probably sixty forty, sixty percent short term rentals and forty percent year round. It switched a little bit more to uh. More long term or year round residence, but still significant amount. Uh, the issues we had with it were monitoring. Uh, was certainly problematic between myself, Board of Health, uh, any any regulatory enforcement, police enforcement. As well as uh just, I I believe there's a court case out there that came of these types of things. I think it was down the Cape that dealt with the. Use of a single family residence and how that pertains to how residences are expected to be used when you live in a residential neighborhood. And short term rentals, they found were outside of the normal expected use of a residential neighborhood. Granted, you can have uh zoning or general bylaws that allow those things, which is a lot better than the citizen rate, but just to kinda give you a where I'm coming from. I believe since I've been here and I'm I'm three plus years on, and I think the bylaw's been in place about five years. And correct me if I'm wrong, we've had three applicants, none of which have succeeded. Uh, so I don't believe we have a current short term rental situation in town. Uh, I I think that. Sort of leans towards the idea that the town really isn't a a vacation or short term rental like a Newbury Port, a Newbury, or any of the Cape and Island locations. It does create a, an enforcement problem as far as when people go in, when they come out, is it continued use? Is it not? Is it a party house? Um, you know, my opinion overall is it seems like for this town, it may be more trouble than it's worth. Uh, on the flip side of that, I certainly don't wanna deprive anyone of use of their house if that's additional income. But the other side of that is we're also moving towards trying to introduce. Uh, accessory dwelling units that would provide a better long term solution for income or uh more affordable housing. And there was at our uh planning meeting discussion, some concern about ADUs being. Used as short term rentals, and it wasn't something, at least the person that spoke was speaking favorably about it. And I would certainly hate to see something like the uh proposed ADU bylaw be. Um, not approved or 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 uh just have trouble getting through based on. Uh, our current short term rental bylaw. So my. I guess my my feelings toward this, and I think Sue, you know, I I hate speaking for someone else, but she seemed to be on board that. One, our short term bylaw currently is not very good. Uh, it doesn't work. We've seen it not work. It it's, it creates too much process. We would rather see that at a minimum rescinded. Uh, during the time or prior to us going to town meeting with the ADU. And if that's at town meeting to rescind that and then bring the ADU in. Uh, and then bring it back at a later date for a rewrite, or just rescind it altogether and um just let it die.
Okay, do you see an issue with um rescinding the short term bylaw and bringing the ADU together at the same town meeting, as long as, you know, we explain? Cause I I know that's the target for the planning board is to follow.
Right, and and I think if we explain to folks that we have a concern, we don't want ADUs to be used as short term rentals. That's not the intent of that bylaw. The intent is to provide. Uh, housing for the people that can't afford to live in town. The the kids of people are already here, parents who are here, caregivers, or just a secondary income for people who have been priced out of town. Uh, so to have something like a short term bylaw that. One, isn't functioning, and two, hasn't been greatly used, put a a uh, you know, suppress this. Potential good bylaw that would bring a lot of those things. We're looking forward to town. Uh, it would just be a shame.
Yeah.
You have one quick question, Sam. You said that there've been three applicants to date for the short term rentals and none were successful. Do you mean the applications weren't successful? Their business all was?
The applications were not successful. So it didn't even get to a point of rental.
Yeah, just just to clarify, the third is is actually still pending.
Okay.
Uh, but Sam's provided an opinion that it's not allowed use in the district. That's been communicated to the applicant. Uh, work with Wendy on process wise, how we're gonna handle that, but it is still pending. But but the board.
Definitely, thank you.
Even if the board approved it, it would be contingent on the building permits, which would not be forthcoming. The issue is Sam can provide an advisory opinion, but that's not appealable. Uh, so it's it's really partly up to the applicant, whether they wanna apply for. A building permit get denied, which is an appealable action. They can't appeal his advisory opinion, and he can't formally act on it until there's an application before him.
Another comment to make is the short term bylaw we currently have is just junk. I mean, we looked at it. Like a few weeks ago, and it's, there's so many holes in it, and it's so loose and doesn't really provide for anything. So I think we should look to rescind it. I don't know what the process is and. Whether we initiate it in town meeting, vote for it or whatever it is, but we gotta definitely hold that up.
So if it's rescinded, um, does that then preclude any short term rental?
Or yes, oh, yes, it's not allowable use.
And short term, just to keep in mind, short term rentals are rentals of less than fourteen days. Uh, so it's still allow people to rent out an accessory dwelling unit, rent out a secondary, uh, you know, second unit in their house. Uh, have borders in their house if they so chose, just not less than those fourteen days. So it would be longer term rentals. There are other issues within the building code as well that would probably discourage some of the short term rentals. Um, depending on how it's set up, could involve potentially sprinkling, um, it may or may not be needed depending on the extent of the use.
I think the accessory dwelling thing, I listened in when they had their Zoom meeting, that. Seems to be a much more uh reasonable way to go. And that was, they've got it pretty well taken care of so far. I think that the town meeting could wrap their heads around both the issues that they presented logically, right, together. They would see, I think, then the flaws in the short term rental. Much clearer by understanding you have the opportunity for the accessory dwelling units. So I don't think there's a conflict bringing them together at the same time. accessory dwelling units. So, I don't think there's a conflict bringing them together at the same time.
Yeah, and I, I guess.
So, it's, so short-term rentals are currently are specifically precluded. They're, they're addressed by saying that they're specifically not allowed?
Not currently, but that's what we mean.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because don't we have to do that? I mean, if they're not referenced at all, don't they? I mean, my recollection was that in zoning, you didn't specifically somehow control something and there was no control on it.
So, Dan, uh, Sam was referencing a judicial decision. It says that you can count on it not being an allowable use in residential area.
Okay.
Yeah, there is the court case, but also we could, um, specifically add to our uses in the zones or our prohibited uses, I should say, that short-term rentals are prohibited. That's an easy statement to add if, if we want melton suspenders until such time that we either bring it back or, or don't.
Cool.
Okay, so do we wanna vote on this or?
Yeah, well, I mean, the context, like, as I think you know, is, you know, we had the call with town council a few weeks ago. She gave us some advice on what some other towns have recently gotten approved by the Attorney General's Office. On the direction of the board. So, it sounds like the direction would be, you know, to propose to repeal, make clear in the, uh, bylaw that this would not be an allowed use. And, but at this point, we wouldn't be looking to draft something new to replace it.
Yeah, that you're feeling.
Yeah, I, I.
But. It doesn't mean we couldn't do it in the future.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a ground swell.
Well, yeah, I guess it depends upon people, you know, actually who are interested, um, you know, speaking up. Right. But after that.
I think the current bylaw for the short-term is so grotesquely deficient that you just have to terminate that.
Yeah.
That you obviously, what you raised, we got some, one that's so atrocious, we're gonna get, uh, away from it.
Yeah, so I think that's a good first step, but if you wanna revisit in the future and come forward with a reasonable, that's a whole other discussion.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, so, you know, the, um.
That, that could be a great thing as part of the public lead-up, which could start this summer, but to, to, you know, let people know that the proposal is gonna be to rescind by, and to call for input if there are people who, who would like to see something better in the future, that we can work toward that or, you know, make an express.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that would be, that would make sense to do it that way.
Okay. So, that's, you don't need to vote or anything?
No, I, there are directions.
All right. Thank you, Sam. Appreciate you hanging in there.
No problem. Have a good night. Uh, hopefully the rest goes really fast for you. We'll see ya.
Okay, next item. Um, so this is the draft questionnaire of boards, commissions and committees. So, the origins of this are, I guess, you know, changing to the town manager form of government. We had a lot of committees that did all the work, or a lot of the work of, of managing town affairs. And it seems like our committees are not quite in step with having a town manager and the staff. So, we just wanted to kind of a comprehensive review of each committee, find out what they've been working on, you know, what their goals are. Make sure they're consistent with the select board's goals. Um, as these are appointed by the select board, we would like their mission to be in alignment with what we see as, uh, priorities for the town. So, uh, the first page here is just a list of those commissions and boards that are appointed by the select board. Uh, we're not nearly with ones that are elected at this point. We don't have authority.
Actually, it's not commissions.
Boards, commissions.
Uh, contracts.
Yeah. Um, so that it's just a very, this is just a very general, um, questionnaire. So, what we are contemplating is this would go to each board commissioner committee, um, and along with the page from the document that Jim's office has been working on with the background for their charge, um, where they make up the terms and that kind of thing. And then we would schedule each entity to come in and have a discussion with us. And this would take probably a year to do, I think. How many do we have here? It's twenty?
One.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe one, I'm thinking, you know, does that seem too ambitious, Angus, or?
No, I mean, it, it all, it's all cyclical, although the meetings tend to always be pretty bold, but, but, you know, there might be a meeting where fitting two or three in might work, especially if they're.
Yeah, well, you know, there, there are two, you know, energy sustainability and, uh, climate change, electricity committee where there were four shared members between the two.
And so are mission.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Parole, you know, tandem.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, I guess the first thing is if, if there's any comment on these questions, whether you think initial information should be asked or, um, this incorporates some of the information that, that Jim's office needs, such as who posts the agendas, who's responsible for the website, um. Um, so, any comments on that first?
Yeah, the question, question I had is, you might wanna ask, are there any, uh, could any of these boards be combined with each other? Any functions that overlap that, you know, could you envision your, your committee, uh, merging with another one?
Yeah.
Um, there are some potential ones there, but I don't wanna just suggest it because they just don't.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any? Um, so I see the, um, you know, this priorities for the next year, two years and five years. I can think of one committee where, oh, even longer, um, a longer-term priority might exist and but I guess maybe you just work cut into the five-year priority with an explanation.
Or any, and you know, which to provide, you put it in there too.
Yeah.
That's like a doppel category.
Right, anything we missed, so can tell us. Um, one other thought I had, I wanted to run by you, is whether a select board member should be appointed to each committee. I mean, not necessarily to go to every meeting, but just to have responsibility to that committee, kind of keep tabs on. And that thought, I mean.
I think that's a great suggestion because in a way, and not appointed by, that, that's, but as like a liaison.
Yeah.
I think that would be really helpful because there are some natural groupings invited by to topic or subject matter. Each of the board members has your own kind of portfolio. Some of that's happening informally anyway.
Right.
I think that would actually be really helpful, uh, so the committees, uh, and their chairpersons have, you know, they know who, who to contact, because it can feel like, I'm sure it can feel like, uh, you know, maybe a four-headed monster between the three board members in my office. And I think having a lia, a board liaison would, would be really good. I think that would be well-received.
Even if it was only for a year or so, I think, I think just adding that ceiling thing.
Yeah.
I'm sure that's like twenty committees, you can handle another twenty meetings.
I already got it. So, if you're on board with it, uh, maybe if you could think about which ones you'd like to take. Rick, you have some on the card already.
I'll take select board.
You could take finance committee, for example, if they'll have you.
Oh, yes. Maybe that's another slide you have in this chart in this matrix too, right?
Yeah, I didn't wanna add without checking.
Well, I didn't say add my name, I should add this one.
I know. Okay. Any other thoughts?
Um, yeah, no, I think, thoughts and then, I don't think we wanna chief committees at this point.
No, 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 just any other thoughts on this?
No, no, it's a good, it's a, it's a good idea. It sort of brings things, hopefully will help bring everybody into a,
I know.
Yeah, alignment's a funny word, uh, because.
Yeah.
But, but, um.
On the boat.
Yeah, yeah. Just make sure that we, that everybody understands that what, what the intent of each committee is and the general direction.
Yeah. So, any of these wanna pick to, to have first on our next meeting? I think Jim, we had talked about, you know, maybe I come up with a schedule.
Definitely.
Schedule, but if we could pick one for the next meeting, don't be uncomfortable. Any of the committees you're involved with, I think, um.
No. Um, well, I will, you know, I'm gonna be revoked the next meeting, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep things as simple as possible.
All right, how about the personnel advisory committee, since we have already acknowledged that that may not be?
That's a great place to start, right? If you can get that.
And, and it hasn't been appointed, you know, for the last, for the last couple of fiscal years.
They'll be on the board, they'll, they'll be on the agenda. Nobody will appear.
But it's a good opportunity.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, so we're free to put that on the next agenda. And then we'll, Jim, if you could work on a schedule, come there.
Sure.
How would that be great?
I do know this district commission, they've, uh, you know, recently completed the, the, uh, last phase, the historic property survey, so we're gonna get the mapping updated, but that's, that's a big accomplishment. And, uh, also obviously the town hall restoration and painting. Uh, so I, I do know they'd be very happy to come before the board just to talk about some of the recent accomplishments as well as some what's ahead. That's, you know, that would be an interesting one regarding things like soldiers, sailors.
Yeah.
Try to gauge, you know, what level priority they, they do that.
Is there potentially an opportunity to combine those two or?
Not really. Uh, the historic district commission and other states as well has, has, is a regulatory entity. They actually only meet very rarely. Uh, they, they have been, I think, more active uh, in the last year just because Wayne engaged them in, in color selection for the painting. But, but, uh, unless there's a specific, uh, proposed, uh, change to any project in the historic district, they, they really don't have role. So, it's a very narrow.
I mean, the, the other thing is we could look at membership of the district, because it is, it's quite odd. The makeup, it's like, it has to be a member of the, I think it's the realty committee, like the, uh, 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 it's recommendation from the American Realty Association.
Oh, I understand.
It's a, it's a very, it's a very strange makeup in the bylaws.
Yeah.
They just need revamping in general.
But that, that makeup is a state.
No, it's.
And if I may speak to what you just raised, as well as doing this, I think you do have to keep in mind that the bylaws themselves have gotten a little jumbled over the years. They may not be really what you want. In fact, for all we know, we're violating some of the bylaws because of our current practices have evolved different than the bylaws.
Right.
You know, I, I'm gonna speak to the thinking on the book, maybe coming back to your body. The thinking, but, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So, the, the document that Jim's office worked on has the bylaw that's in charge, so it's all.
Or in our case, the two bylaws that apply.
Right.
Usually, one of the things, talking about scheduling, I think, make sure that they have a meeting or at least that they can discuss what it's called.
Yeah, so that's why I think we need to get at least a month.
Yeah.
Lead time. So, if we start with personnel committee, we should be. So, do you think we should send these all out right away or stagger it or what might be for?
First, first serve, whoever.
Completely set up first, yeah.
Okay.
And then, and then whoever doesn't return, we don't have to have.
So, this is something that could go through your office then, if I get this organized?
Um, I think if, if you and Max can get it done, yeah.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Get Max in for the do on my vacation.
Yeah. I'm sure you get a, the all kind of mischief if you don't make.
Right.
Okay. Item H, review of Elliott Fund Draft Program Summary. So, I think a lot of people maybe have heard of the Elliott Fund and not really know all the details of what it means. So, this fund was established as a request from Thomas Elliott in eighteen fifty-two for the benefit of West Newbury residents that needed financial assistance. His great niece, Emma Elliott Cole, further endowed the fund with a contribution nineteen thirty-one. And her direction was that the selectmen of West Newbury would administer the fund. But that's about all the direction that we have or we've found so far. So, what we wanna do, I mean, there have been people who've taken advantage of this. It's usually dealt with an executive session. Uh, we just wanna make this more of a formalized process so that people applying know what to expect. Um, we'd like to develop guidelines and application requirements so that we're giving everybody the same opportunity to receive assistance. Um, so, right now, we're working with, um, KP Law, our legal counsel, to come up with an application form and to figure out, um, you know, things like eligibility requirements, whether they would be grants or loans. Uh, we need input from the town accountant, I mean, the town treasurer in terms of, you know, repayment details, what security would be held and so forth. Um, one thing we need to think about is whether we wanna do low-interest loans or grants. Um, so, these are the conversations we'll have in the next, you know, couple of months to try to get this, uh, organized. And then we would have a formal application that would be available on the website. So, um, and we'll probably have some kind of PR with about this. Um, if there's anybody that's watching this that has an immediate need, this, because we're working on this process, doesn't mean you can't reach out right now. Um, you could either get in touch with the town manager or the select board to, uh, to accommodate you. Uh, anything else you need to add on that, Angus?
No, you just said it very well.
Okay. Anything either of you want to add?
I got a lot of things. We get to the point of what we wanna do for how we move on forward. But I think the point you said most important is, this is to sort of get this into the limelight so that people understand. The three residents. And the one other thing, looking through the document, what was the root? That board managed it and the interest could be expanded, so I'm not sure about the principal and the accounts, so that's just something to look into. And that's for discussing in the later day.
Yeah, yeah, there's lots of.
Yeah. But, yeah, I don't know what point you're saying, what principal can get expanded, what interest, and that's something at some point will probably have to resolve. Maybe you keep a base number, you take half the interest can be expended on annual basis. I don't know. You know, kind of what Jim was saying, that the principal would only.
It's quite, yeah.
Comparison to.
But you still have the question, you still have the question of whether you wanna run fund down or make it perpetual. That's what Chris is really talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was to make it self-sustaining, so.
Yes, right, exactly, right.
Opportunity.
I think that's what Chris.
The income only is to be used to support of the poor, the town of West Newbury. That's the world of town as that is. That in mind.
Yeah. Okay, so just stay tuned for further details on that. Yeah. Right, um, next item, D P W structure. So, this is the review of a proposal to restructure stacking of the department.
Okay, uh, so I have a presentation of, of presenting the board's consideration and discussion. Uh, it's, uh, it's a proposal to restructure the Department of Public Works and intended to maintain or enhance the typical levels of service the department's provided in recent years while providing advancement opportunities for current senior staff and increasing, uh, some staff hours for administration and administrative and operational responsibilities. Uh, really, this idea came up over the course of the last, uh, two and a half months of going through the review process of different, uh, D P W applicants that have uh, come in. The former directors' final day of work was, uh, right at the end of April, the twenty-seventh. We posted the ad today. We've received twelve applications and two include six first-rounds interviews and, uh, uh, four second-round interviews, the second-round interviews, uh, Rick attended on behalf of the board. And both internal applicants, uh, received two interviews. Uh, so within the applicant pool, we, we did have and do have, uh, multiple applicants who are presently town or city D P W directors with multi-year ten, tenures and direct experience with many of the department's present challenges. Uh, but the interview prospects often made clear that, uh, within our current personnel, uh, we have, uh, multiple staff. Uh, we have both the objective and the capability, in my estimation, to take on greater responsibilities, uh, each representing a subset of the director's responsibilities, not the whole job, uh, but in the aggregate department in recent years. Uh, I wanna just get into a little background on how the structure of the department has already changed um, in the last several years in some respects, but particularly in the last, uh, in the eight months or so leading off to the departure of the former director. Uh, the, uh, department has expanded to include a new, uh, professional position. The program's project manager position that was added to the department in the fiscal twenty-three. and uh that position was filled in the early fall of of uh this past year. Uh, also, the hours for the department's primary, primary administrative support position were substantially expanded along with the position of job responsibilities. Uh, so the programs and project manager uh position uh was filled at thirty-two hours a week, and by doing the thirty-four hours, we'll have some uh you know, play there for longer work weeks, and the administrative support position, which until uh mid-fall last year had been just fifteen hours a week, was expanded to thirty-four hours a week, uh largely driven by the, when the former resident servant administrator was positioned. Responsibilities were transferred into DPW, as well as uh creating some newly defined responsibilities, which had previously been done either by uh myself or the finance department specifically related the uh facilities reservations and rentals, recreation field use reservations, and administration of the parks and rec summer program, including the MyRec platform. Uh, so, anyhow, that's all a long way of saying the department's doing a lot more than it was, and I think that's really been a a kind of a continuum over the last, really, the four years of Wayne's tenure, I think, you know, the department really took on a lot of projects, uh, you know, beyond historically what what had been done. Uh, so, in the ten weeks or so since the vacancy, uh I've been working very closely with the the four kind of uh personnel that I mentioned, the the uh the highway superintendent, the highway foreman, the buildings and grounds foreman, the pro- programs and projects manager, and the DPW uh business administrator and procurement assistant. So over the last ten weeks or so, uh we've been working closely together in the absence of a director, uh and they've been working more to closely together as a unit, uh and that has helped me get my, the wheels turning oversee what has become an incredibly broad uh scope of that department, uh how potentially modifying responsibilities uh of current staff a director position. So the specific proposal is actually to not fill the director position. Posting has been withdrawn, and to restructure the department in the four divisions, each reported director to the town manager. Uh, that would include uh administration, procurement, and contracting, highway, buildings and grounds, and programs and projects. And in summary, the administration, procurement, and contracting uh would become the CPO, right now I'm the acting CPO or interim CPO. Uh, the staff person who holds the business administrative position has completed two-thirds of the MCPO certification and is well on track to becoming fully certified, as with a mass uh certified public purchasing officer. Uh, so I think would be a a logical and and uh you know, great position, you know, great uh uh person to take over the procurement responsibilities. Uh, that office of administration would also coordinate work order system for service request to vote the highway, buildings, grounds divisions, and part of this proposal would be to add a part-time administrative assistant to help with the account payable payroll and purchasing support, uh cause I, it's definitely not realistic to expect the current employee to take on all of this, plus what what she's already given. Uh, with the highway, uh the the proposal would be to promote the lead uh operator uh to actually a highway superintendent position, uh that would be a non-union position, and to add a full-time union position, which would help with the the work out uh uh out in the field, both in highway and ideally in buildings and grounds, each area. I've been aware both during Wayne, Wayne's tenure and prior to him and Gary's tenure, that there are real personnel limitations in terms of the actual, you know, projects out in the field. Uh, so this would include adding a new uh full-time union position. On buildings and grounds, the proposal would be to uh promote the foreman to a facilities manager type position, uh with additional management responsibilities included for capital planning, uh including page school, uh the green, and some of the implementation of the green communities projects, and I would also look for this, um this uh and increased role of Parks and Rec with regard to both uh operations management planning, but also the longer-term capital planning and facilities management, which has kind of been lacking for a point person. Wayne, and to some extent, I try to help, but it's, it needs a point person. Then the programs projects, I think this one would change the least, uh but that position would would report um to the town manager directly rather than to a DPW director, and would have some increased responsibility for board and commission committee support on a uh but really is already the product manager for a number of those projects, so it wouldn't be a that substantial change. Uh, so, mechanically, the way this would work would be to uh allocate the aspects of the director job description into other positions' job descriptions uh in a way that made sense. Uh, that would uh lead to the reclassification of personnel based on the revised job description, so that would be a board review of both the grade and the step uh based on where things shook out in terms of the job functions. Uh, and uh looking at comparable rates of pay both within the organization and within the regional market. Uh, if, as I said, it will create uh two new staff positions, obviously much lower paid than a director. Uh, uh but that would be a union position uh with a job description to be agreed with the union, as well as administrative support, I'm estimating fifteen to twenty hours a week, uh focused primarily on payroll, accounts payable, record keeping. Uh, the policy framework for this proposal would be to keep this cost neutral relative to the FY twenty-four budget. Uh, I do have, uh, let's see, a I have like an word chart, I know, I know that we have many people on Zoom, but there might be people watching it later, so I just, uh this kind of illustrates the current structure, you have uh uh everyone reporting to a director. Uh, this would be basically uh more of a collaborative uh approach with uh direct reporting to the town manager, but part of how this would work uh would be as a group, we would be meeting uh, you know, every week and staying in coordination that way to make sure the department as a whole is uh aware of what one another are doing, and operating in a cohesive way. Uh, and that it's a clearly defined kind of point person for each of the both uh operational responsibilities as well as the programs and projects, which especially over the last you know, three or four years, have really taken on an increasing share of the of the department's uh responsibilities, certainly with regard to its public profile, uh the DPW is, is very, very engaged with a whole host of of uh projects and initiatives, uh and so we wanna, you know, at least sustain that and not expand upon that. So, uh, the legal context for this proposal is, uh, you know, we do have the Act, uh, there was a Act of two thousand and five that established the DPW in the town of West Newbury, prior, uh, it was Highway Department and Buildings and Grounds. Um, and that, chapter one eighty-four of the Acts of two thousand and five, places the DPW under the Select Board jurisdiction, so while under the Town Manager Act, my office is responsible for personnel oversight and administration, a proposal like this is very clearly a policy change, and so I would in no way feel comfortable implementing something like this without the board's uh endorsement, so uh I would look to the board for the policy direction to implement any change outside of the annual budgeting process. Uh, and the memo I sent to you uh is for your consideration, refinement, and endorsement. Uh, if you do proceed, if you use to court proceeding with the changes as outlined, or or may refine that, it would take significant management time and the capacity of the coming months to fully effectuate the changes, including bargaining with the union and and working with the affected staff. Uh, but I did meet either myself or with Wendy, uh with each of the four primarily affected staff, and we perceived a lot of uh very positive feedback and a lot of real excitement, uh because we have basically a number of individuals that are looking for professional advancement, they're looking for more responsibility, and they have real capabilities, so while there's a hundred details to be worked out, uh, there is a lot of uh sense that, you know, even though losing Wayne was kind of uh adding some support and kind of empowering some of the people we have, uh, there there's a lot of, I think, enthusiasm that that could really work well. Uh, so, uh, the board would be engaged with the key decision points as a reorganization moved forward prior to the FY twenty-five budget cycle, so things like the you know, uh job qualifications and salary wages and uh things like that, as well as when we got into the FY twenty-five budget time, uh reflecting a division within the budget structure uh would be very important, and obviously the board would be uh uh you know, uh mostly involved with that, as a key decision. So, uh, some budgeting implications, uh uh, I would want to, if we go forward with this, I would definitely wanna confirm the oversight authority for each line if they adopted FY twenty-four budget. Uh, some of them are very clear, they fall under highway, or they fall under buildings and grounds, or uh uh, but some of them are not so clear, so that will all need to be worked out. Uh, I would wanna take the time to think through any anticipated uh potential line item transfers that a reorganization like this could implicate, so if, for instance, we expect to uh reduce costs, uh well, here's a clear example, right now, there's the uh separately budgeted line item for the director, uh vehicle allowance, that would be anticipated to be zero, so if that funding could be used to help make the cost neutral in a different line of the budget, that would be something I would wanna, you know, make clear at the outset, rather than in May or June of next year. Uh, and if successful, uh we would go forward with the FY twenty-five budget structure to reflect this this new approach.
That's the idea.
Alright.
A nutshell.
A nutshell.
Really large nutshell, yeah.
So in terms of timing, are you confident that the um revised job descriptions and reclassifications could be worked out, you know, in the near term? Um, you know, that that would all have to happen pretty quickly, if if we're assuming that those employees would, you know, be promoted.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be, uh, I think my my biggest hesitation is the union position, is you just don't know, you know, how long that might take. I think that would be strongly supported by the union, that's that, so I think that the, you know, it might not take that long, but obviously that's, that's a factor outside, uh you know, I've got my control, uh or our control, so I think on a non-union positions, uh, I mean, it is, it's a little bit difficult because you can't hit that bottom-line target of being cost-neutral without getting everything worked out. Uh, but I think if we, you know, assume that a certain placeholder amount for the new union position, I think we could you know, work everything else out, I I do think it would take the summer, uh anyway, and over the course of the uh uh summer, there's obviously a lot of other things, I, this wouldn't be a you know, front burner issue, but as, as you know, from the last ten weeks, it's been a lot of time and thought, you know, gone into this, and uh and still a lot of detail work ahead, so right now I have, uh, you know, kind of a a very good starting point on which responsibilities will go where. Uh, so it would be the time to to build those into revised job descriptions, work with the affected employees to where those actually make sense, then work with the board on the salary wages and uh but, you know, that can be an iterative thing, it's not, it's it's not always a a clear, you know, straight line. Uh, so I'm I'm hesitant to give like a specific date, the goal would be to get that all worked out by the end of the summer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but there can be twists and turns.
Yeah.
Uh,
So maybe the first, again, the first quarter, which would be in September?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think there's, it's got to be, yeah, I think it's gotta be worked out on on that kind of timeframe, because if it's not, you know, we can't stay in that role forever.
Right.
Um, and and part of why this is strange is withdrawing the job posting, it's not taking that position out of the organization, there's still a director position on the books, we'd be choosing to uh not fill it in in hopes that we can come up with a a different structure that's better, but if after a certain period of time, a certain kind of effort, those pieces don't fall into place, we could always re-advertise the director position and just go rogue. Uh, so I think a target of uh the end of September is very reasonable.
Okay.
So in that timeframe, we're sort of in limbo right now.
Hmm.
Are there any projects or any issues that could potentially fall through the cracks, or might have to get delayed that?
We've, we've had things delayed, I mean, absolutely, uh you know, anytime you lose a, you know, person with Wayne's productivity, you know, that you're gonna see impacts of that, we have kept things going, and it's gone very well, but I know speaking personally, there have been individual work weeks where I've been personally more than twenty hours in a single week on procurement. I wasn't involved with procurement, I, well, not not involved, but I wasn't, you know, so being the interim chief procurement officer in the ten weeks that I've had that role has probably cost me two hundred hours, so there's other things that would be further ahead. You know, if not for that, so I, yeah, I can't, I can't tell you there's no lot, I don't believe anything slipping through the cracks, in fact, I feel personally that I have a better finger on the pulse of what's going on, especially with the highway and buildings and ground side than I did before, with the, with some of the project management that that Christine's doing, or with the work Pat is doing with with the you know, facilities or or the summer rec, we've always, you know, we've both worked together for for a long time with each other. I've always felt a a good handle of what's going on with both of those. But with the highway and buildings and grounds, there was always a, you know, a chain of command, and uh so it's actually been kind of nice being able to be, you know, have a front row seat on on some of those issues and how some of those decisions are made, or how some of the things are prioritized. Uh, so I I I really don't believe anything's slipping through the cracks, but my to-do list, I mean, there's some, you know, there's, and Wendy has, I think, a pretty good handle on what's on my to-do list that's not getting done, and some of that's been on there for six months or more, it doesn't mean it's unimportant, it just means there's only so many hours in the day, in the week, in the month. And, uh, you know, we do everything we can, you know, every single day, and we still have more work coming in than going out, that's just the nature of this town. So, you know, I I don't know that it would be any different if we still had a director, uh but there are definitely some specific things that are not where I would have hoped they would be based on my own workload, just because I've been spending a lot of time in procurement, and 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 some other things related to just the operations of that department. Uh, but I will say, I think it's gone really smoothly, uh all things considered, I mean, you know, one of the things on the procurement side, obviously, you know, Wayne leaving two days after town meeting, there were a whole lot of appropriations voted at town meeting, and a number of those, like, what, the Emerald Ash Board, the invasive species management, you know, were extremely time-sensitive, so I kind of had a clear, like, you know, really just make those happen, and even though there there are other things I gotta do, so it's it's been difficult. Uh, and and I do, I will say, I'm not, you know, I think this can work, I think it can work well. I do have some concern just about, uh, you know, if it, if it doesn't work, uh you know, it it becomes a bandwidth, a serious bandwidth issue, um and if we try it, and it goes a certain point, and it doesn't work, you know, can you, can you untangle that? Uh, but at the same time, I've I've been hearing, uh typically second or third-hand, put some critiques going back you know, a year or so, that maybe the department was becoming top-heavy or too management-heavy, uh which I don't think was correct, but I I'm aware that not everyone understands what our project manager is doing all day, they don't understand how busy busy we are, so you know, but I think that, I think by, you know, elevating some of the people you have to take on some of those responsibilities, uh, I don't think anything's slipping through the cracks, but I have to make decisions every day of what I'm not gonna do, and it's not that it's unimportant, it's just there's other stuff, it's. I have to make decisions every day of what I'm not gonna do, and it's not that it's unimportant, it's just this other stuff is actually on fire that has to be dealt with.
What do you need from the board tonight?
Uh, I, well, I would, I would like, uh, you know, you're, you're either laughing to, to go forward with rescinding the position and to begin kind of take the next steps of, of working with staff on uh formalizing proposals of updated job descriptions and, and position classifications. Uh, or, or to, to say, no, that's, you know, interesting idea, but, but no, and, and let's just go forward, in which case I would I would uh basically be uh going forward with extending an offer to one of the candidates to be the new director.
Thank you, but um, I have a question, I'll make it, no, I don't have any question, I mean, I'm you know, I, I've written up the fourth night, I don't know, the fourth sitting right here now.
Yeah.
And um, no, I, I, you know, I take a motion to uh uh, we sent the ad, withdraw the ad for the director position and um we'll add with um trying to structure the reorganization as, as you described.
One second, um, discussion, Rob, would you have?
Nothing, I, I mean, I have a couple of things, but uh it was just, I took Chris's question a little bit differently, I was just wondering, are current employees out there on duties and feeling comfortable that they're well-supported, given the director's uh absence and, 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 you know, how busy you are with, with other stuff, how are they doing in the field, that's a question. Then the second question I had to that was uh making it expense-neutral. You've got a position up there that's no longer in DPW, but when you talk expense nu, so I presume that that budget item is gonna go elsewhere or something?
Away which?
You, you, that's no longer.
Other project man?
Yeah.
No, it's kind of in the aggregate, yeah, it wouldn't be moving into a different department.
Okay, so, yeah, no, it's, it's included, it's expensive.
Correct, yeah.
But other than that, that was my reaction to Chris's thing, is just we gotta remember that they're out there working hard all the time and I would like to think we're taking, we're making sure that they're well-supported.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the feedback that I've had is that they're really pulling together and, I mean, more productive as a result, so I think.
Which is why I think maybe Angus reached a conclusion they did, I mean, this is kind of hot, this is nice.
Yeah.
But anyways, that, that's how I took Chris's question, that's, just wanted to make sure that, like you said, they're out there actually kind of pulling together and making things happen, that's great.
I think it, it would be a very uh positive thing, staff motivation-wise, to see that we are promoting and, you know, bringing along.
Say the words on brilliant.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
No. Yeah, I take that. I haven't been feeling too good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Okay.
All right, I'm Jay, referral to public hearing, proposed amendment to personnel policy.
So this is the same thing you talked about last time, but uh I wanted to make sure that before circulating to the staff and, and putting this up on the bullet boards and things, that we, we had it exactly right for how you wanted to do it, you know, we can look at, we can do a deeper dive on this in the future, but at, at the moment, I'm really just looking to clarify uh the change that was made for the, for the one employee who had the you know, you know, or under the existing policy would have to take vacation time for their last two days of.
So in um, just typically for jury duty is five days? Like, I was three days chosen, why is five days better?
Well, what happens after five days?
Yeah, we have to take vacation, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause you get a federal grand jury's for a month.
Yeah. I guess we'll just have to take.
And they, I think they pay us a certain rate.
Yeah.
They, they, they'll be paying you.
Much lower.
It's twenty-two cents, it's not so much.
Yeah, so actually, just in case you're curious how, how that works, so it, right now it says that the finance department has, has handled in the past is the employee actually signs over their jury duty pay to the town and then gets paid. Is that just, so you don't have these aberrations, the payroll?
That's just for the three or five days.
Yeah.
Because after five days, they're on the short string because they're only getting the jury money, which is.
That's right, yeah. Yeah, so I think, you know, that's something that we might want to look at again in the future, I, I just didn't want to slow this down.
Uh, well, I think that's pretty extraordinary too, and when somebody does, when something runs longer than five days, um, I mean, I don't know if I know anybody.
Mark Metten, I think, federal grand jury.
Yeah, okay, but it, I don't uh, yeah, it can happen. But, but I mean
The majority. All right, so we need to vote to?
Uh, to refer this to public hearing.
All right.
Yeah, okay, but I make a motion to refer this, that the amended personnel policies included in the um open space, open session package to public hearing.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we will circulate this and uh, two weeks from tonight, we'll have a hearing in the board.
Item K, since you don't have enough to do?
You know, I, I really haven't decided if I'm gonna accept this appointment. I, I wanted to, I mentioned it at the last meeting, it's just kind of a non sequitur, and then it occurred to me, oh, I really ought to formally disclose, I, I did receive this appointment, it arose from a kind of a, you know, I talked to Rebecca pretty often on the, on the Tucker thing, so I said to her, oh, I'm in town. I just, every time I drive through the town center, my town planner brain goes and I wonder what the zoning is and I haven't taken the time to look into any of that, but I said to her, you know, when things slow down, I you have to help, and then, and then well, right, and, and that was probably six months ago, and then uh, we were both at a uh, uh, I think it was the, um, HR training out in Boyleton a, a, a month ago, and she said, oh, the other night you were voted to, I'm talking, oh, really, I thought you were kidding. He's like, didn't you get the email? They sent it to my, uh, email, I rarely check, and there was a letter, I'm saying, oh my gosh. I really don't know.
They probably wouldn't want to send it to the town.
Yeah, 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 so anyway, I, I, it's exciting, I'd love to do it, I do think I can help, like, I have some ideas, some economic development things that I really don't get to, quite used to here, this is my probably all those things, so uh, I, trust me, I will think long and hard, I mean, I might reach out and then I say, hey, I really can't accept, but, you know, I'd love to come to a meeting and just share some ideas, cause you know, uh, I am very hesitant to take on a commander.
Yeah, so, so my, you know, my one question comes down to, I think you'd do great, and I think it would be cool for Rovlin to you know, to have access to whatever you're able to offer to them, but bandwidth.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a, it's a big, big concern, I think, yeah, I got a bandwidth, you know. Yeah. So I may, I may respectfully decline and just go to a meeting honestly, cause I, I just have spread pretty thin. Uh, but I figured since I kind of blurted it out in the last meeting, I figured disclosed, you know, even if you sanction me joining their economic development committee, I'm really not sure if I will, I think I'd probably go to a meeting, try to get a se- sense of and we're probably, I know they haven't met three years.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I don't know anything, I got my nose like running, so here, I don't pay much attention to them, my people, but.
So we would really just be accepting this?
It's really just that, I think if I joined, I think I'd file this with a clerk, it's really just, just a, a finding that there's no material conflict. Uh, uh.
But I mean, we don't need to approve it, we're just acknowledging receipt of this ethics right there.
Uh, I believe that's correct.
Technically, you can do whatever your mind wants all the time, so, yeah, it would just be accepting it.
There is something in my employment contract that I said, that I can't take outside work without advance approval of the board, that I think assumes compensatory, this is obviously false here, then, but I just wanted to.
No, I appreciate that.
Care on the side of caution, so.
All right, so does somebody want to make a motion that we acknowledge receipt of this ethics disclosure?
Make that one.
All right, all in favor?
All right, all right, I'll, I'll let you know once I decide, I'll make a settlement.
All right.
They may never meet, you know.
Either that, either that or the, the four members, the four existing members of the five potential members on the committee are each already putting in twenty-five hours a week and looking for somebody to just put in twenty hours.
So, so many years ago, I was appointed to the uh so-called smart zoning committee in Quincy, I lived in Quincy for ten years and I was already chairing a, a different committee, but they, they put me on the smart zoning committee. And I sound great, I was the town manager down in Marshfield. So I went in and I started working on it, and to come to find out, and it didn't take me long to figure it out, basically, they hired someone to do a zoning recapification a couple of years prior. That person, by his name, had basically delivered a very draft work product that said, I'm out of budget, I'm out. So had left the city with like, out finished work product. And once I figured out, they were actually looking for me to, I guess, I didn't think it hasn't started. I have a backup.
Yeah. No could be, he goes on.
Yeah. There's only recapification, hundreds of hours of work.
Yeah.
For free. Oh, yeah.
All right, we're on to minutes.
Most of these are, are carried forward from last.
Yeah, if we're at thirteen, any, did you review this?
I did, yeah.
I'm going to agree with you.
I did, to thirteen, I had nothing.
Okay.
Was there, so I moved, I, I, I moved, uh, we approved the minutes for February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Favor.
Aye.
Um, Jim, I have one question, I don't know if there's any here, but if the vote is not unanimous, do you typically name, like, okay, that's not being done, like, if somebody votes against or stating? So if we could ask next?
Sure.
That, that'd be good, I don't think there's any in this one. Okay, the next.
Yeah, it would be essentially so you can identify.
Right.
Where it was at.
Yeah, February twenty-seventh, I do that. So.
Okay.
Okay, first, under B, um, request of temporary signage to promote uh Canacroft event. There's Carol Decker with Essence County Charles, I think there was, there was a carryover, I think, from another similar question, uh, you know, Carol Decker is a resident of West Newbury, but um, there's, I think there was another woman, I believe, who was with us. Uh, I think, another Carol. That's my guess, is that that's supposed to be? Um. Uh, and then the next one is actually two occurrences in IOC. We're grading the field. So.
So how you want it to go?
And I don't know. Through a precision grading.
That's why we need more hours.
Okay, and then uh C, although I think there's some more text in there, where it says, it's, uh, the line begins article twenty-two. E P A revenue, maybe? Uh, and um for that one. You see that stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, um, uh, so uh, I'll make a motion and see this, you chairists don't like to make a motion.
Both of you can't.
Should through, so should, yeah, so I move the leave um, approved it, minutes for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three as amended.
Second. Favor.
Aye.
Okay, Chris has states, okay, and then we have March.
Twenty-sixth, oh, oh, okay.
That was the joint being.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I, I nothing for that, so again, the we approved those minutes, second.
Favor.
Aye.
Okay. Um, June twenty.
That's right, you can, you, you were there at the finn conference.
Yeah.
Uh, and then uh uh, then the last one was six twenty-six, June twenty-sixth, twenty-three, um, so.
Yeah, item A, do you have anything on?
Um, I didn't notice, don't, didn't note, note that it was I made, but it probably was, cause it, it was regarding Ash Creek.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it says overall, determine that speed bump to flame might be the best option and uh
That was one of the options, you know, we were gonna follow up on.
But that was not one, in fact, I think I specifically said I was not.
Well, I think the resolution, they were gonna check with the insurance company about liability of speed bumps.
Right, so we were gonna follow up on several items, so, so we can just change that, so it doesn't suggest that was the best option.
I thought it was a.
I know you thought. We did not agree.
Leave it the way it is. If I, well.
Yeah.
What's that?
I was gonna say, I did want the chief wire, and asked him about the liability issue, he said, probably not a big deal, no.
I, I did talk to insurance on, on Friday about that, but we can, we can, we can have that approved, can it?
Um, on item H, did you have anything before that?
I had two, I had B.
Okay.
I got B, I got B.
Oh, all right, good, Chris.
Not a big deal, uh, it said read second in the motion, I wrote, I was, I was second, but I was okay, it's, but just.
That was before I was informed that I'm allowed to second.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, E, um, this is as much a question. Um, at the end of it, it says January, who's front of budget, it would be eighty-nine thousand, so with eighty-five thousand that we budgeted.
Yeah, no, it's not eighty. Yeah, we actually signed the contract today, that's eighty-four, five.
Okay.
So, no, five hundred dollars.
You niggled five hundred dollars.
There's a, uh, if there's a change order, we can absorb a modest change order.
Relative to this E, it said the amended motion passed, did not pass. Um, cause I had made the motion and it didn't get passed, which is why I didn't vote for that issue.
Um, right. Yeah, Chris made an amendment.
Amendmented a motion to give Angus the authority to verify the financials with. The amended motion was not accepted.
Yeah. Um, do you wanna, I'll give back and listen to that.
Yeah, so amended motion failed.
Yeah.
So.
The amended video. That was the vote on the amended motion, do you recall?
I don't even think it was accepted, how should we vote it?
Oh, okay. I know Max is having trouble hearing.
Yeah, last meeting was not.
Yeah, yeah.
I was at the meeting at this desk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Must be the desk. I think it's a, a combination of where the microphones are placed.
Yeah, I wonder if, um, potentially, my phones sometimes, they might be, they might be too far.
Okay, okay.
That was odd.
Yeah, that was odd. Adam, anyways, because someone else, he mentioned a, a Walter mentioning a hearing problem with it, so potentially, maybe we might have to get a new mic system or reset the owl to where it needs to go, but either way I'll, I'll try to re-listen to it as well, but uh, so, the tone. Will you take this?
Under item H, um last sentence that I suggested assessing solar panels as part of the page, please, I just don't recall that.
I, I, I puzzled though, yeah, too, but I will leave it. Why, cause I didn't.
Um, and we also discussed some other things such as, um, you know, Chris had made the point, if we already have things in the capital budget, let's use money for that, cause we're not investing additional staff resources to implement the projects. And um, I think we discussed Whitestone, Greenway is a possible project. So maybe just listen to that conversation again.
Yeah.
Um, I had one on you, did you have anything else?
You had a bunch.
Okay.
Go ahead. You, way off the page, L, it said no second, it was made on the motion that was. U, way off the page. L, it said no second was made on the motion, but it was made by Wendy.
No.
Again, you're getting crazy.
Sorry, which one was that?
L.
L was no second.
Okay, it's written second. Oh, wait, so there was two.
There's no second.
Yeah, there's two motions in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then R, we're gonna go that far down the road, is nasty as heck. Eighty minutes said were approved. Right? First of all, it was May, uh, June fifth meeting, not June sixth.
Yeah, the first three we just approved tonight, so we deferred.
Right, this, like, oh, that whole minutes is crazy. None of it makes sense. And that, that matter all out, should have been. April twenty-fourth, we did approve, that's correct. May twenty-second, we held off on, and that's because that's one that mentioned about the water commission rep enlisted me, but in fact, it was Rick. And so we hadn't approved May twenty-second at either.
But we didn't do those.
Right. And June fifth, not June sixth minutes, which I think we just did.
Uh, you just did June, uh.
Twenty-sixth. June twenty-sixth is.
Oh, this is what we wanted to get.
Anyway, I'm saying it's, that is nine minutes.
Yes.
Um, we, we can use less judgmental words, I think. Just saying.
Correct.
Would you like to do the minutes?
Sure, I can give a notice in the line. Don't take a disposition.
Okay. Anything else before you?
I'm not gonna say another thing.
Okay. On item U, um. So these are two, actually two separate things. There's the AHT Small Grant Program and then a separate grant agreement for AHT use of CBA funds. So the sentence is just not consistent with that. The Small Grant Program does not use CBA funds and explicitly cannot use CBA funds, so that just needs to be part of that. And that was all I had. Do you have anything else, Rick?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a motion of the minutes for June twenty-sixth. Twenty-three, as amended. Right here.
Um, just noticing it said at five-thirty at the clock. Does Monday, June twenty-sixth at five-thirty? And before. Is that two?
Yeah.
Well, so, so the, I'm looking back at February meeting, it starts at seven. So this actually, when I, I was surprised when I got the notice, the agenda for tonight's meeting, because it came through on my email, um, as five-thirty. And we've always put it in as seven, even though it's technically starts at five-thirty.
Right.
But we always have put into the meeting calendar, the start of open sessions, just so people don't show up at five-thirty saying.
Right.
So this, the agenda for tonight's meeting was the first one I've gotten, so I think, I don't know if you or Max set that up in the calendar, but what we've. And, uh, yeah, so like the top of the minutes for the twenty-sixth, for consistency, it, it should say seven, because that's when they, uh. I mean, it's a little, you know, I could see it both ways, but, but in terms of consistency and also, I think, this logic.
Because it makes sense for the minutes for the open session.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think it did create confusion at the previous meeting on Facebook, it was posted at five-thirty, people were beefing because they wanted to get to the Ash Creek discussion, they thought they had missed it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's, it's, I don't know what the right answer to that is. I remember one back when I started years ago that I kind of wondered like, should we put seven, should we put six back then?
I would go with whenever the public meeting starts.
That's what we, that's what we have, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you, you.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Right, yeah.
All right, on favor?
Hi.
All right. Okay.
Okay, uh, so under manager updates, I, uh, included that we had a kickoff meeting last, this past Thursday with the, uh, consultant, Leighton Sampson. Uh, Mark Harlow joined me for that. Uh, we had a really productive kickoff. Uh, they obviously, I mean, we, as you know, we put a lot of thought into that scope and our queue, and they had clearly had a very clear sense of what we're looking for. They've done a lot of research coming into it. Uh, they, we've uploaded, you know, dozens of documents to them, uh, so they came into the meeting with a really really good targeted questions, um, after we met here in the office for a bit. We walked us around the site. It's very, uh, cordial discussion, uh, nothing, you know, nothing new, uh, but really good for the consultants to have a, a front row seat of kind of exactly what's going on. So I, uh, we came out of the meeting, they had some specific, uh, additional documents requested, so I spoke to Mark uh earlier today, uh, maybe his office and mine will get them all the, uh, you know, the four or five additional documents they asked for. Uh, but I think they're going to be really well positioned to do exactly what we provided them to do, which is to give us a very uh thorough third-party review of, of both the estimated costs as well as the uh permitting path if the town were to acquire and develop that site as a well field. Uh, they're going to reach out to, uh, both Mass D P and to, uh, that, uh. So it's, yeah, it's great to have them on board, and I think they're going to bring a lot of value to either validate what we think we know, or if we got anything wrong to, to help us understand that, to, to public understand that.
Yeah.
So I'll continue to, uh, provide updates on that as it goes forward. Great. Uh, next item, N, uh, uh, you know, myself, Wendy, Rick, we were all, we were all at the June twenty-seventh meeting, so I just thought it'd be important to have that on tonight's agenda, just for a, a brief recap. Uh, I did reach out to the town planner last week, and I know she's working on a specific write-up of that meeting, uh, and she had sent that over to the as she should, to just have them give a look through before we put that out. So I included the, just the information on the project webpage on the town, uh, website, uh, but she will be finalizing shortly, uh, you know, a more formal write-up of what took place, but um, you know, it was, uh, uh, fairly lengthy, but, but still targeted presentation vote about the MBTA Communities Act, as well as uh, they clearly spent a lot of time putting together different illustrative examples of higher-density, uh, uh, housing, and in some cases mixed-use development that, that was from a rural or semi-rural context. Uh, it seemed like the examples they had selected for the presentation were uh, were properly chosen. Uh, not all of them might make sense here, uh, for sure, but they were, they all were within a continuum that was worth looking at, worth talking about, so they went through a lot of those illustrative examples, and then broke into, uh, four different breakout groups that went around to four different stations, each for a fair period of time, uh, focused on, uh, locations in town that, you know, depending on what, what the voters think, but, but may, may be able to accommodate, uh, you know. A lot of questions, at least in the groups I was in, there were a lot of questions that were asked, it seems like, between the consultants and the town planner and planning board members as well as the residents. A lot of these workshops over the years and, and, uh, more often than not, they are successful, but sometimes, you know, sometimes they devolve. It's very, you know, it's tough subject matter. No one likes a statement. It well allow people in attendance to really engage and, um, uh, you know, I'm very, um, you know, I, I'm under no illusion as to how challenging this process is and will continue to be. Uh, but I think we had, you know, a good turnout, uh, considering it's, uh, early summer. I think, I don't know, forty, forty-five people. Uh, I mean, we'd love to have other people and more. I, you know, I think for this time of year, I thought it was a good turnout and, you know, commend the uh town planner and the planning board for the efforts they made to really make sure everyone in the community got noticed. Even the B, you know, some of the town view too. Either of you have any additional observations?
No, I mean, I think it was really the hands-on part that was really good, to actually put physical structures of the types of units on the properties. To see what the density looks like. Really hands-on, man. It's also interesting, the examples that got out, when you put a sticker on it. It didn't have its new breed, like, it was something that had all red stickers that nobody liked. It's just, I don't know. Yeah.
That's it, I think, uh, it was a part of that, you know, that.
I would.
There's not a single green sticker.
I went back and looked the second time at a couple of things.
Did you?
I bet a green sticker. Like, it's not so bad.
No, I think it was a little.
Oh, but I did, did, uh, we did sign the contract for the page, uh, condition. Actually, under contract, and they're already working with Christine Wallace to get all of the, um, you know, files and things that she put together. Uh, that's, uh. Uh, but that's something that we're going to need to make sure at a staff level, we're fully responsive when they ask us for something, that we get to them right away to, to allow them to keep moving forward. Uh, so we're glad that's under contract. The only other one that I can think of was a real update. I did sign a change order earlier today for the town hall painting. Uh, the original invitation for bid had called for two coats of primer, one primer and one coat of finished and, uh, went, and Brian had met with me last week and said, you know, he didn't feel that one coat was going to be enough, and so he had, uh, recommended that we go to a second coat, and since their bid was well under the budget, we could absorb that well within budget. Uh, but I did sign that change order today, so that, uh, thousand dollars to what was the awarded, uh, price for that contract. The two main ones that I focused on, tried to get out the door, one is the, the paving, and we're, we're so close to that. And then I am putting in more time toward the investment, uh, management, uh, but, you know, that's a fair amount of work to get that all put together, but it is, it's, it's something I'm actively working on.
Right.
So, uh, Rick had, and then when, you know, Rick had sent this along, and I had meant to put it on for discussion, um, and I, I forgot, and I didn't realize that I put it into the packet materials, and so when I was putting the packet together, and I realized I forgot to put it on the agenda, so I just kind of dropped it into for discussion, so, uh, I don't know if you want to talk it over tonight or, or put that up or a future one, but.
I mean, I almost see it made to make more sense for us to talk about it when we each had a chance to look at it, you know, to look at their website, um. And I haven't spent a whole lot of time, I mean, I talked to them at the, uh, uh, MMA annual meeting, um, and, um, have, you know, kept the business card, it was sort of on, you know, back burner, and then I saw the new reported, um, just signed on with them, um, you know, to use their services, and, uh, so I thought, what was I talking about? Um, because, um, you know, they seem, it's, it appears that they have a status quo that, you know, that they, they have a good way of reaching out and then processing the information. Um, and, and, you know, it's, it's something where it struck me that, you know, there are, and I'm not going to speculate on topics right now because I don't want to get hot-wire, but, um, you know, there are, there are topics where it would be good to get a broader base of, uh, of resident feedback.
So is this the service that they're providing or the actual, like, software program? I wasn't.
They provide a service. They, 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 they help you, um, sort of phrase your, your question.
Yeah.
Pose the information, um, and then they process the information, um, and, and you.
And you go report or something?
Yeah, I mean, they, they send you a, a text message, if I remember correctly. Yeah, it's through a text message, um, um, you know, letting you know that there is, um, a, uh, initiative to look at. Uh, it says no more than one month, and they're, they're living, they do it, I guess, and, and, uh, um.
And do we enter into a contract?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we would enter into a contract, and I have no idea what the cost of that is, but, um, uh, we're back in the home, it was like eight thousand.
Yeah, actually, they, I, they did, they gave me a number, but I don't remember.
So is there a way for us to try this out, or this is just their website? Flash over.
Yeah.
All right, so I think we put this on our future agenda, Chris question one.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Okay. Um, the other item I have for our future agenda is, um, a remote work policy. Um, you know, after COVID, there was a lot of remote work, and there's some information.
You know, I made it right there, right?
Yeah.
I literally just wrote that, I, I, I guess about that.
So, um, so this would be something that we put up for, um, staff review, but, so I, I have a couple of samples from other towns and cities, so just send that to you and.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
And then maybe we can have a draft at the next meeting, just hold on, putting up for.
What kind of car carriage from over?
No, I'm looking to formalize it, because I think a lot of people got in the habit during COVID of, of just assuming that like it was a notice on working remotely today, but really it should be.
Are we still doing that?
Yeah.
Not, not on a sustained basis, but, uh, but there, there, yeah, it's, we, we do have a written agreement that we put in place, uh, a couple of years ago, or, or, you know, so, and, uh, sometimes that will be, you know, someone will say, can I work remotely, or, or, like Wendy said sometimes, to say, hey, I'm working remotely. It's, it's difficult to have consistency when, uh, when there's not actually an approved policy on it, so I'd like to standardize things that. There.
That's good.
It's, it's, it's not a rampant thing, but it's, it's, there's enough. Then I think it would be good to have some consistency.
I have two things.
Sure.
Ash Creek Swamp again, wrap that up. And so we need feedback from Nervigally Planning.
Yeah.
And I also talked to Michelle, and she's going to be talking to Mass Fish and Wildlife. She called me today, actually. She's talking to them on Thursday. She said she's uh Mass Fish and Wildlife, and had a number of residents calling them too, so we'll see where it goes. And then the second thing, and we talked a while ago about, uh, if we get a joint meeting, maybe by hand with the pin call, to give them tasks to do. Uh, I had a talk to Rob, and he's keeps jarring me like, well, we need to get things to do. He's already going down and doing some things already.
So maybe they should be one of the first two days we meet, well, because that's I mean, that's part of it, that, you know, what are you working on instead of allowing it? It's like, what, what's your work?
Yeah, I mean, what's the one? Right now, the retirement, um, of your fund.
Yeah.
He's got an old spreadsheet, and he's been working with them. That would have been one of the tasks, like, hey, what's happening, do it, sorry to you.
Yeah.
So, um, I think in particular, we, if we have issues, that we have to prioritize rather than just picking one.
Right.
So, I'd just like to have that on the agenda at some point.
Okay.
I actually have a couple of things also relevant to Ash Creek, since Chris brought that up, um, uh. First off, I, I, I'm one, I'm wondering if, um, DPW maintains a lot of the maintenance that they do and, and road closed events. Um, obviously, it happens multiple times a year. I don't know how often, maybe Chris maintains a lot, I don't know, but, but, um, because, because you're always walking that street, but, um, uh, but um, it would be interesting to understand a little bit about what the cost really is to do that, so, um, not only how frequently they do it, but. to do that, so, um, not only how frequently they do it, but, you know, how much, what's, who, who and what is deployed, what are the materials used, just, you know.
I was thinking the same, as I'm walking through the other day, and I happen to see a lovely lady as I was exiting, I couldn't talk, but when the road rides out.
That's a great, that's a great view, and they're nice bottles on there.
The, the speed limit drops dram- dramatically on that road.
About the speed limit, the actual speed.
The speed, yeah, so it, it is a, a traffic calming measure, the funny thing is, a day later, it was nicely raked out again.
Yeah.
Where's the picture, I think my picture's mushrooms, this year, anyways, it's just perfectly smooth, it took a note in the same spot.
Yeah.
So that will be, you know, hopefully part of the discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's funny, we, I talked to Butch after that, and I asked him, you know, how long they've been doing that, he said, you know, as long as he could remember.
Yeah.
So it's a part of the practice.
It's only been the last three or four years where that road's been maintained to runway quality, um, because it used to have very large swales through it, and I, I think I mentioned it, maybe it was Angus at one point, that somebody must've given a request to have that road better maintained a few years ago, because all of a sudden, it started getting better maintained, and then speeds picked up, so.
Yeah.
I don't know where the direct it came from, and it's a discussion for the future of it, at some point.
Yeah. And the other thing relative to Ashtray is, um, I'm. To, um, the, uh, portable radars, in the government radar, so, um, I guess you, you and I both got that, so we have that in, so it's, you know, potentially part of the discussion today.
All right.
There you go.
I know, this is the late one. Michelle, your turn.
Sorry.
Want a favor?
Yeah.